When it's 6:57, why not?
Think we should get crazy?
Yeah.
I mean, we could get up three minutes early? Good evening. I will call the Dublin City Council meeting of Monday, June 24th, to order. Anne, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Ms. Aludo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Mr. Rosa.
Here.
And Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mike, can you stand up enough to lead us on the pledge? Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, special presentations. Ted Orr, is he with us? There you are. Hey, Ted.
Hey there.
Welcome.
Thanks so much for having me this evening.
Absolutely.
So I always get the fun part of talking about the neat things that we get to do on the great streets of the city of Dublin, specifically in Bridge Park. And I'm going to speak very briefly about two events and show you a couple of fun videos, just to give you an update on some things that, along with the Crawford-Hoying team and the City of Dublin staff, we've all been collaborating on for some time and we're pretty proud of. Can you click to the next?
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Sue. So first up really is the Dublin market. And the stats that you see on the screen now really speak to this year. But what I wanted to talk about a little bit or bring up some of the stats comparative to last year's market. As you know, this is our second year managing the farmers' market, after we sort of helped reboot it last year, as I said in this chamber last year. This is all Michelle's fault that we do this. But it's something that we're really proud of and we've worked hard on, along with city staff. So this year, last year, we had 160 vendor interest submissions. And that is essentially someone at some point submitted an online form on a website that said, hey, I think I'd like to be a vendor in the Dublin market. That takes 10 seconds of someone's time. This year, we had 200 applications submitted, which takes an extensive amount of time. That means that the interest in this market, we had 200 significant vendors that felt that what they wanted to sell or present to the Dublin community was worthy enough for the market. And so they took multiple minutes, in some case, hours of their time to fill out these applications. So we think that's a neat stat. Little bit of interest last year, this year, after last year's market really threw the roof. We doubled the market in size this year. We went from 45 vendors on one half of Longshore to 90-plus vendors. So really exciting. And the communities responded. Our first market, we estimate that we had 8,000 people come to the first farmers' market. It has leveled off a little bit. Last year, I reported that we estimated we had about 2,000 people per Dublin market. This year, we think we have about 4,000 people that attend per market. And although we estimate that a significant number of those are City of Dublin folks, we do think that people are coming from other parts of the city, just based on some vendor feedback. So again, really fun to see how vibrant this market's grown. Certainly, there's a demand for it. So frankly, I'd like to see if there's any questions specific to the Dublin market. And if not, I can show a quick video.
Any questions at this stage? Michael?
Are you going to expand the number of vendors? Are you thinking about stretching it out?
You know, it's sort of the same that we felt last year. We were really hesitant to expand because we felt like quality was better than quantity. And we didn't start off the 2019 season thinking that we'd double it. But once we had 200-plus applications submitted, we were able to find 90 quality vendors. I think we might water it down if we expanded it too much. And with, as you know, in the coming year or years, with the North Market coming online, we'll certainly partner with them. So we've got to sort of see how that shakes out, because there'll be vendors within the market itself, in the permanent indoor market. I feel pretty good about the number. But, you know, when I first started this a couple of years ago, I didn't know that we'd get anywhere near to 90 vendors, so.
Great.
Michael?
It's, you know, it's clear that the parking has made a huge difference. It's so convenient. The parking's right there. I was there for a few minutes last weekend, and it's spectacular. A lot of people, a lot of great vendors. And again, the parking just makes it so much, so much better.
Yeah, we really set out a bold goal to build what we think is a premier farmers' market in central Ohio. And certainly through the vendors' applications this year, that's one of the number-one things that they've said. They feel like the market's set for success based on the parking. And they're really, you know, there's a lot of great markets around town, but they don't have the opportunity that we have with the parking.
And it says right on the slide there, every Saturday through September 28th. What time is it, Ted?
Oh, yeah, 9:00 to noon, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Is that rain or shine, even if...
Rain or shine, rain or shine, yeah.
As the storm is falling down on the city of...
And we've been, you know, again, another thing that we've learned a lot about, last year, we were really hesitant, but people come. I mean, it rains, people are used to buying their goods every Saturday to help them throughout the week. And if it rains, they come, they bring an umbrella, and it works.
I just got this compliment last week from an ex-city council member who said they liked your mix.
Yeah.
And you actually buy some clothing there and some vegetables there, a very interesting mix of vendors, so.
Miranda Swininger, all of us, sorry. She spends a lot of time trying to perfect that mix, so she'll be glad to hear that. That's great.
Thank you.
Do the vendors change, Ted, from week to week, or they, once you get a permit, it's for the whole time?
It depends. You can, you can apply per week or per season. We really push that sort of the produce and baked goods, that those vendors become seasonal, because people come to expect the meats and the cheeses. The retail, some of the clothes, we try to rotate those out to bring new things in. So they may change from week to week. So it really depends. For the most part, we try to push those produce, meat, cheese, to be a year-long, excuse me, a year-long vendor, though.
Any other questions, council? We good? Okay, carry on.
We just have a quick video. So this video will get posted online, and I encourage you to take a minute. And there's a section where we flew a drone sort of at the edge. Make sure you pause the video and see how many people are in the streets. It's really fun to look at.
Fantastic. Great.
Next great event that we're also very proud of is ForFest. This was an event that was hosted by the City of Dublin in 2013 in conjunction with the President's Cup. We were approached by city team members, as well as the Memorial Tournament, to sort of connect this with Memorial. Last year was our first year. We hosted it one day last year, just to really see how it would go. We were really happy with results. We had about 5,000 people on that Thursday of the Memorial Tournament. This year, we expanded it to three full days. The weather couldn't have been any better for us this year. It worked out really well. And we estimate that we had over 20,000 attendees specific to ForFest over that three-day period. Second year in, we've learned a lot. We really understand sort of what the audience is looking for from an entertainment standpoint, so we're excited to apply that. And again, just a great open-street festival. Also, what was encouraging this year is we had a lot of great local partners contribute from a sponsorship level. Names like Cardinal Health, IGS, Donato's Pizza. So that was a really, really great moment for us as well. And of course, the Memorial Tournament worked hand-in-hand with us to really procure those sponsors. So another great event. Any questions specifically about ForFest?
Questions from council?
Just one. Obviously, with that many people down there, did you get really positive comments from your businesses, your restaurants, that sort of thing? Did it feed them a lot of energy and a lot of...
Yeah, I think so. And I also think it depends. We, you know, different, different response from others. Overall, everybody was exceptionally happy with it. Some of them, direct correlation drove a big difference-maker in their businesses. And others, they felt like business was similar. One of our concerns always are the office users, right? They're there during the day. How are we going to interrupt their parking and their traffic patterns? And again, for the most part, really excited with how that worked. We learned a couple of things about shutting the streets down for a three-day period, how we have to be conscientious of deliveries to the residents and to the businesses. But overall, really positive feedback.
Yeah, great. It's good to hear.
You'll be happy to hear we had three people come back that did analysis on your development, actually. And I think two of them, it was like seven years ago, we worked with them when we were working, thinking about doing this project. And they said you guys had the perfect synergy. They actually talk about this all across the United States. And I guess one had 80 clients, anywhere from San Francisco to San Diego, and said that, you know, you guys, the way it was done and mixed up, the hotels, the office, the restaurants, the living quarters, was so well-executed that they use Dublin now as a model for the entire United States.
That's great to hear.
It's a huge compliment.
Yeah, it's great.
Because these people are really sharp, and they're national, international type of people that cover this kind of thing. So take that back to the camp and share it with the gang.
Yeah, that's great. They ain't seen nothing yet. Yeah, we're proud of it. That's great.
Kathy?
Quick question. I think I might have asked this last year. Thoughts about a fall-type event or winter-type event, based on what you've learned so far?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it starts to bleed fall, maybe even into Christmas. Last year, in conjunction with the Dublin market, not to take too many steps back here, but we did a Thanksgiving market, which was the Saturday before Thanksgiving. And we worked with our market vendors to have specific kind of Thanksgiving-type, they brought turkeys in, all the things you would think of. We had about 3,000 people attend that. So the interest is there. So we're still, we're definitely looking at it. And we learned a lot from a three-day event this year, so absolutely. Might be fall slash winter or holiday.
Yeah, winter's good. Yeah, they can be very exciting markets. I've had the opportunity to visit a few of them around the world, and they're lots of energy. And it feels like maybe it's about poised to do something like that, so great.
Yeah, exciting.
How's the construction coming on the North Market? You mentioned it. Are we on schedule? And what is that schedule? Remind us.
So the goal would be that it opens about April of next year. As of right now, construction's been good relative to what's pouring on our heads right now. But yeah, I think right now, construction timeline looks great. I know that Rick Harrison-Wolfe and the North Market team are starting to consider who the vendors are going to be for that market, and that'll be a big step. And that way, they can sort of fit those vendors into that plan, and all that's happening right now.
Really cool.
Yeah. If you have an opportunity, I'd love to give anybody a tour of the space. Now, the supports have been removed from the North Market space, and so you can really walk through it and get a great idea of what it's going to be like. So we just did that last Friday, so.
Fantastic. Well, thank you. Is that all you had to cover with us, Ted?
There's one video on this.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
You scored with my daughter and all her 18-year-old friends. They said Saturday night, that was the place to be.
Yeah, good.
You hit the, hit the mark.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for coming in, Ted. Appreciate it very much. It's the citizen comments portion of our agenda. I usually get a slip up here of people that have signed in. I don't have one. Is there anybody in the room that wants to come up and talk about anything for five minutes? We'll listen to whatever you have to say. Chief, you got anything you want to say? Five minutes? Well, listen to whatever. Nothing? Okay. Seeing no hands, I guess we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove either of the two items on the consent agenda for individual vote? Hearing no such request, I make a motion that we approve those two items on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Second readings, ordinances, ordinance 28-19. Anne?
Accept the annexation of 4.816 acres, more or less from Jerome Township, Union County, to the city of Dublin.
Jennifer?
Good evening, council members. There are no changes from first reading, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions from council? Seeing none. Anne?
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes. Ordinance 29-19.
Amen in annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2019.
Matthew?
No changes from the first hearing, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
I'm just curious about Section 1, request a total of 41,000. You said you had 24,000 requested for changes in health insurance benefit status for two full-time employees from single to married, which was not captured. The difference between the single health and the married rate is 12,000. So are these, are these two, these are two employees that got married, or is it two separate employees that got married?
Two separate employees that got married.
Okay, I wasn't gathering that out of, I guess I wasn't reading too well, but I just want to make sure I understood that.
Absolutely.
Is that it, Mike? Anything else? Anne?
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ordinance 30-19. Anne?
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Univar USA Inc. to induce it to lease a facility to retain and expand an office and its associated operations and workforce all within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Rachel?
Hello. Good evening, city council members. Since the first reading, there was a discrepancy pointed out between the memo and the economic development agreement. Staff has since corrected that, so there is consistency there. Just a minor change, and no changes in what the actual incentive proposal was, just how the existing jobs, the retained jobs, were calculated. If there are any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, a representative of the company is here to speak to this project.
Kelly, right? O'Hanlon? Which one's Kelly? Hi, Kelly. Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome to come up and say whatever you want to say.
I just wanted to say thank you for having me tonight, Kelly O'Hanlon. I'm the Vice President of Finance for Univar, Univar Solutions. So today, I'm really happy to be here today, actually. Personally invested in this investment that we're making here because half of my team will be located here in Dublin. And so, and it's really part, the biggest part of my team, actually, from a finance perspective. In Univar Solutions, we are joining together, the first and third largest chemical distribution companies in the world. We, through our acquisition of Nexio Solutions earlier this year, we're joining forces in creating a shared service center. Here in Dublin is a really key, important part of that, as we continue to grow and strengthen the company together. And so if you have any specific questions, I'm free to, I'll answer those.
We are thrilled to have you here, first of all. Any questions from council?
I have just one question. You said half of your team will now be located here. Are they relocating to this area, or were you able to acquire the talent that you needed in this area to fill those positions?
Really good question. So about 15 of them already were located here. Another 10 may be relocating, and the rest, we've had really good successes so far with our hiring. So we found a lot of good quality candidates here, so really excited about the future, actually.
Great. Wonderful. I thought she was gonna ask, when do you bring in the other half? But we'll, we'll leave that question for later, okay?
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Kathy, you have something? You good?
Very good.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in. We really appreciate it. Anne?
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ordinance 31-19. Anne?
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Quantum Health Inc. to induce it to lease a facility to relocate and expand an office and its associated operations and workforce all within the city, and authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Rachel, let's keep going.
Hello again. There have been no changes since the first reading on this project. Unless there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, Scott Doolittle, CFO with Quantum Health this year, does speak to this project.
Scott, come on up. Welcome. Thank you for coming out in this weather.
Yes.
We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Surely.
Want to thank you and Rachel for the support and the offer of incentives for Quantum Health. We're a care coordination and navigation company. We were founded in central Ohio, and we have about 800 employees now. We've been growing about 30% a year for the last five years. So we're excited about a potential site here in Dublin that will suit both current needs and also opportunities for growth and expansion of the business going forward. And happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from council?
Have you executed a lease yet, or is that pending?
It's pending.
Okay.
It's pending.
I won't ask you any more questions then.
Hopefully soon.
30% a year for five years? That's incredible.
Actually, it's almost 10 years. It's been about 28% over 10 years.
That is really incredible.
And our whole headquarters and 90-plus percent of our staff are located in central Ohio, and will be coming along with this move.
Fantastic. Well, we will be thrilled to have you. So thank you very much for coming. Jane, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to say, one, welcome. I know that you looked all over.
Thank you.
I mean, all through the state. And we're thrilled that you came here. And so, just to help us, tell us some of the things that made your final decision, Dublin.
We looked all over Ohio and central Ohio in particular. And I think the most challenging part of the search was really finding both a suitable site with room for expansion, but also allowed for parking, for commuting workforce that comes from all over the place. We found plenty of sites that could meet the current needs, but Dublin in particular had a site that suited our long-term expansion. This potential site has room for several thousand employees over the next several years, so that was exciting for us. And of course, the incentive package was very attractive as well.
Fantastic. Well, we're thrilled to have you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for me?
I think we're all set.
Thank you again.
Thank you for coming in. Anne?
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yeah.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
And Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ordinance 32-19. Anne?
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Dave Thomas Foundation for Adoption to induce it to lease or purchase a facility to relocate and expand its office and its associated operations and workforce all within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Rachel?
Okay, once again, just a small discrepancy that was corrected with the economic development agreement for this project as well, as well as a correction to a table in the agreement. Otherwise, no changes have occurred. Again, the incentive proposal to the company remains the same as it was previously. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And otherwise, Rita Sorenin, President/CEO of Dave Thomas Foundation for Adoption, is here with us this evening.
Rita, come on up. You knew what was going to happen. I mean, it just happened to the two right before you, so. Welcome. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson, members of the council. I'm delighted to be here, and we appreciate the ordinance in front of you today. The Dave Thomas Foundation for Adoption, as you know, is a national nonprofit public charity dedicated exclusively to moving children in the United States foster care system who've been freed for adoption because of abuse and neglect. It's 123,000 children in the United States and 30,000 children in Canada under that same position, moving them from foster care to adoptive homes as quickly as possible. We were also created in 1992 by Dave Thomas, not only the founder of Wendy's, but he was adopted as an infant and understood the nature of what these children need in terms of adopted homes. Through our signature program, one of our signature programs, Wendy's Wonderful Kids, the foundation provides grants to adoption agencies who aggressively move these children from foster care into adoptive homes. And we use an evidence-based national model that's been proven to be up to three times more successful than any other business is usual for these children, who typically linger the longest in foster care. Children in sibling groups, children with mental or physical challenges, children who are opposed to adoption because they've lingered in care for so long, they simply have given up on a family. But this model that we have expanded is growing, is working successfully on behalf of these children. And for the past 15 years, with the generous support of the Wendy's Company, its franchisees and suppliers and other significant donors, we've been able to expand this program into all 50 states, the District of Columbia, and eight provinces in Canada, and have finalized the adoptions of more than 8,000 children of some of those longest-waiting children in care, children who were on the track for aging out. Given this success, just two years ago, we launched an aggressive 12-year business plan to achieve full national scale of the Wendy's Wonderful Kids program, again in all 50 states and the District of Columbia. And since launching that plan, we've more than doubled our staff size to our current 40 staff. We've outgrown our buildings, and in fact, we're co-located in two leased buildings right now, that we've decided it's time to simply find a permanent home for the Dave Thomas Foundation for Adoption. And we're excited to be working toward that move into, back into Dublin when both of those leases expire in April of next year. Given our mission to find permanent homes for children, we couldn't be more delighted than to be considering Dublin as the permanent home for the Dave Thomas Foundation for Adoption, simply because it has the amenities that can attract competent and quality staff. It is located ideally for our central Ohio employees who commute. And frankly, it gives that sense of community that we push every day for these families in foster care. And finally, although we're an independent nonprofit public charity and independent from the Wendy's Company, we work alongside them in this important mission of finding families for our most vulnerable children. And we honor the memory of Dave Thomas and all that we do. I can't think of a better way to do that than to finally find a permanent home here in Dublin, where he created that incredible Wendy's brand. So we thank you for your time today and your consideration of this ordinance in front of you.
Thank you very much for coming in, Rita. We really appreciate it. Any questions from council?
I do. So we'd be so excited and happy to welcome you to Dublin. We feel like this truly is the home of Dave Thomas and Wendy's, so very excited for that. What's your annual budget look like?
Right now, our budget's at about $39 million. That's with a growth plan of, by 2028, we'll have increased our staff size to 80 to 100 employees. And we believe we will have finalized the adoptions of more than 60,000.
Oh, my goodness. Congratulations. It's amazing.
That's really fantastic. My sister and brother-in-law just finalized an adoption about two months ago.
That's great.
And I was looking at my new nephew and thinking, this child, he has hit the lottery, is what he has done. From the at-risk life he was going to have to what he's now going to have. It's really incredible, the work that you do and the lives that you really change. So God bless you for your work, and we're thrilled to have you here in Dublin.
Appreciate that.
Anything else? Kathy?
With that incredible growth, certainly, your funding model has had to expand and grow. Could you share a little bit about how you're sustaining and doing that ambitious 12-year plan?
Absolutely. It's a great question. For the longest time, we depended just on the generosity of Wendy's and the franchisees within store campaigns. We've significantly increased those fundraising activities and events. But we've also built a much stronger internal staff that does typical mature fundraising across the United States. We also have had significant investors that have looked at this model and have helped us look at, how do we take this program to scale? And so they've been, now, the Blue Meridian Partners have been a part of increasing both our budget and our ability to take both the programs to scale and ensure our long-term sustainability.
Jane?
We're thrilled that you're here, and we're thrilled that we could give you an incentive to be here. But we also have other incentives. We have a lot of people. We have a lot of volunteers. And you're a nonprofit. So I would, well, I would encourage you, if there's ways that we, as a community, can help you meet your goal faster, stronger, with more hands. We are of a wealth here. And I know that there are many people who have been impacted by foster care. So I hope that you'll have an opportunity to meet up with our, Kristi Nardeky, and I'm sure you already know her, and utilize some of the wonderful people that we have here to help you do that.
We look forward to doing that, absolutely.
Yeah, great.
Thank you very much for coming in, Rita. Anne?
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan. Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Thank you, Rita. Ordinance 33-19.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to City Barbecue LLC to induce it to lease a facility to relocate and expand an office and its associated operations and workforce all within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Rachel?
Okay, once again, since the first reading, there was, again, a minor clarification to the economic development agreement. So it's now consistent with the memo as presented to council. Again, no changes have been made to the incentive proposal itself. I'd be glad to answer any questions that council may have. Otherwise, representatives of the company are here this evening.
Any questions from council? Is Keith Willis with us? Keith, you knew this was coming, buddy. We've done it three times now.
Keith, they normally bring us free samples of city barbecue.
I'm kind of curious what, you're empty-handed, buddy.
She patted me down out front, so I could... Like I said, my name is Keith Willis, 6175 Emerald Parkway. Thank you for entertaining us here tonight in city council chambers and for the city's continued support. Also Also with me is Rick Mailer, our founder. Again, I'm Keith Willis. I'm the Director of Design and Construction for City Barbecue. And just wanted to give you a little background. Rick and his wife Bonnie, they started City Barbecue here in Dublin about twenty years ago. They started as a catering business in his garage off of Donegal Cliffs Drive. And his first location, he opened in ninety-nine, and has quickly grown to almost fifty restaurants right now in seven different states. We have a lot more growth, aggressive growth in the near future. And with such aggressive growth, City Barbecue is going to continue to add staff in its support center here in Dublin. We expanded our office footprint in two thousand seventeen, and we are quickly outgrowing the two buildings that we currently occupy. With the support of the city of Dublin, City Barbecue plans to invest in an environment to consolidate our teams and foster our culture. In addition to housing, our accounting team, our IT, real estate, marketing, operations, and guest services team, this new facility will allow for expanded research and development, and will feature an expanded training facility and a test kitchen. City Barbecue is going to be retaining its current sixty-eight employees in the city of Dublin, and we plan to add an additional thirty-nine employees through 2023. With the infrastructure, the talent pool, and the support that we've already received from the city of Dublin, that's what makes it possible for City Barbecue to thrive today, and we hope into the future.
Fantastic. Hey, Rick, could you come on up? I can't, I'm going to use this, Dana, but I got a bone to pick with Rick.
Yeah.
It was very...
We both have a bone to pick with.
A rib bone?
So last year, at the Dublin Irish Festival, I was asked forcefully to participate in the Best Legs in a Quilt contest. At quilt, as was, or quilt, as was our fine city manager, Dana McDaniel. And Dana and I came within a whisper, finishing as the two runners-up to Mr. Mailer. What do you have to say for yourself?
In all due respect, Honorable Mayor, you were wiped out. Wasn't even close.
It wasn't close. You're right.
And what's even more hurtful is that Dana beat you. But I hope that doesn't affect the vote for the night.
Now, well, we'll see how it goes. We haven't voted yet, Rick, so we'll see.
You're voting for it.
So from Donegal Cliffs to this, that's an amazing story.
Well, we, the irony is, nineteen ninety-seven, Bonnie and I moved to Columbus. We decided to live in Dublin. We thought we'd be here for two years till I got my next gig. So I got the crazy idea to start a barbecue joint. And I proudly hold a letter from the city of Dublin telling me that I have a commercial piece of equipment in my driveway.
He shows me that every time I come by his office.
If I could please remove that.
Yeah.
But in all sincerity, Dublin's a great place to live. We love it here, and we want to stay here.
Well, we want to keep you here for as long as you're running this operation. Any questions from council?
No, you just got a great product.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
I just have one. When are you going to open a retail store here in Dublin?
Yeah.
What was the over-under on that question? Hundred percent, did we get that question? Actually, we're looking for a site right now.
Well, we can't wait to have a retail store as well. But, you know, also, to the Mailers, you have been such great corporate citizens to this community. Every lacrosse team, every band, everybody that's come and knocked on your door, you've given generously, and that is the hallmark of an outstanding corporate citizen. Just your participation and help in all of those things is tremendously appreciated.
Well, thank you.
Yes, fantastic. You're what this community is all about, so thank you, Rick. Anne?
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Aluto.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amoros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. Good luck to you. Ordinance thirty-four dash nineteen, Anne.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement for a term of five years. The Dublin Chamber of Commerce, Inc., for the property located at one twenty-nine South High Street.
Stay there. I make a motion, we postpone this consideration, this ordinance, until July the twenty-ninth. Council meeting, is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Aluto.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amoros Grooms.
James.
Ordinance thirty-five dash nineteen, Anne.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a development and a real estate purchase agreement to convey the property located at seven thousand one Dublin Park Drive, Uchiller LLC, authorizing execution of various related documents.
Donna?
Dana? I'll just jump in real quick. Good evening, members of council. So we're back here for a second reading, public hearing on this. I've asked Donna to just do a quick recap, a little bit of history and comparison of investment by the Chiller. You're also in receipt of a letter from Ms. Wendy Herb, President of Chiller LLC. I think that went a little bit of a ways to answer some of the questions that you had posed at your last meeting as well. I think some of this information, we're going to review again, you've seen before, but we're going to recap that again. So with that, I'll hand it over to Donna to do that, and we'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Dana. Donna?
Thank you, Dana, and good evening, members of council. For your consideration is a development and real estate purchase agreement to convey property located at seven zero zero one Dublin Park Drive to Dublin Chiller LLC. The city-owned land is just shy of seven and a half acres and was purchased by the city in nineteen ninety-three for a price of three hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And this is a photo of the building as it looks today. This is a seventy thousand square foot facility that is used for ice hockey training and figure skating. As a reminder, the relationship between the city and the Chiller goes back over twenty-five years. When the city purchased the land upon which the existing facilities were built, the lease has been amended a couple of times since then to bring us where we are today, and the current lease agreement will expire in September of this year. There's a more detailed summary in your packet, but this comparison gives you an idea of how the skating and hockey program has grown over time, with more than fifty thousand students having gone through the Learn to Skate and Learn to Play programs. For example, the number of youth hockey organizations has grown from one to six, with more than three thousand players now participating. Beginning with just one high school hockey team, the program now includes fifteen high school varsity teams, five high school club teams, and sixteen JV teams. And when the Dublin Chiller was built, there were one hundred players that made up six adult teams, and that has grown exponentially with two hundred nine adult teams and over thirty-three hundred players now in that league. In response to the demand for hockey and ice-related recreation, the Chiller has expanded their footprint from the original two rinks in Dublin to ten Chiller rinks in six locations, with an estimated total of a million guests visiting each year. In order to upgrade the mechanical equipment and address issues related to wear and tear of the two original buildings here in Dublin, the Chiller is contemplating a six million dollar investment. Should the Chiller proceed with the renovations, that would bring their total investment to eleven million dollars in the property to date. We researched the county auditors, assessed valuations, and the Chiller buildings now show a value of approximately two million dollars. The assessed land valuation of nine hundred and thirty thousand four hundred dollars is higher than the seven hundred and forty-five thousand appraised value of the land. As such, the Chiller currently pays over one hundred and eight dollars in real estate taxes. But with the proposed investment of six million dollars in the existing facility and the potential of adding a third sheet of ice at a cost of seven million dollars, the property value would increase significantly. Conversely, if we were to take ownership, it would come off the tax rolls. Another financial consideration that's not illustrated in this table is the valuation of the economic impact relative to the spending at local hotels and restaurants of parents and athletes involved in the Chiller programming and the tournaments. While the previous slide showed a financial snapshot, there are other social and economic benefits that the Chiller supports with the roughly one hundred thousand dollars average annual net income. For example, they are the home to Ohio sled hockey through the American Special Hockey Association for players with physical limitations. They support a number of city school, educational, and summer reading programs through donations from the Columbus Blue Jackets Foundation. And the foundation provides scholarship money for high school hockey players and other students, and funding for local youth organizations. Neither these benefits nor the Chiller operation has caused the city to incur any cost in the past twenty-six years. The answer to these questions posed by council at the first reading have been generally provided for in the memo. But to recap, the Chiller is required to make the improvements as per the terms outlined in Section Seven of the Real Estate Purchase Agreement and Section Three E of the Operating Agreement. Failure to make those improvements within the timeframe may result in triggering the reconveyance as outlined in Section Nine of the Real Estate Purchase Agreement. As a reminder, the Chiller needs our consent to transfer ownership prior to 2025, as we have the right of first offer. Regarding zoning, the site is within the ID five district, which defaults to the existing planned development text for Sports Ohio. That information has been included in your packet. Any modifications to the Chiller, then, would follow the PUD process, which would require a review by Planning and Zoning Commission. The real estate purchase agreement terms, as presented, do not allow for the imposition of a deed restriction, as the Chiller is not amenable to such a request. And as outlined in Section Eleven of the Real Estate Purchase Agreement, should the Chiller decide to sell the property prior to January one, 2030, the city shall have first right to purchase the property, as mentioned previously. Should the city desire to execute that option, the transaction would be subject to our standard practice of obtaining current appraisals to be certain the purchase price was in alignment with the market. We were expecting that Ms. Herb might be here this evening, President of the Chiller, to address these questions and the answers that she already approved, provided in the letter that's included in your packet. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. Otherwise, we would move forward and ask that city council, excuse me, staff recommends that city council approve ordinance thirty-five nineteen.
Questions from council?
I just have one question. Are they a nonprofit or a for-profit entity?
They're a for-profit entity.
So the property tax generation and affecting the schools and so forth wouldn't be a...
There was discussion of them going nonprofit, but they hadn't acted on that yet.
Yeah. So...
Any other questions from council?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Aluto.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amoros Grooms.
Yes.
Thank you, Donna. Public hearing resolution, Resolution Thirty-four dash nineteen.
Sorry. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Dublin City Schools for the School Resource Officer Program.
I will introduce it. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that. Good evening, members of council. This, if approved, would be a renewal of contract, which dates back to the school year nineteen ninety-eight through nineteen ninety-nine. As it stands right now, we have four full-time school resource officers in each of the middle schools, and three full-time school resource officers in each of the high schools. The city currently shares the cost with the schools on five of those SROs, and then the city pays fully for two of those SROs. This would be a renewal of that contract with the same monetary breakdowns, if approved. And I will take any questions if you have them.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, is this type of a shared financial relationship, is this fairly similar with other districts, or is this rather a unique partnership in Dublin?
So we have a, we have a very unique structure as compared to other central Ohio agencies, specifically those that are like-sized. We are the only one that I know of that has SROs in every middle school. So to answer your question, I mean, shared expenses would be, would be a common theme, but we are definitely unique in the fact that we have SROs in every middle school. Most jurisdictions have them in every high school, and that's it.
I don't know if it's in everyone's or not, but when I opened this in my board pack, embedded in it is an amendment to services agreement between the city and NAPA Genuine Parts. I just want to make sure we get that cleaned up before, before we move forward with that. If you go through the first two pages, the memo and the record of resolutions, the next page is, there's some other things embedded in there, and I just want to make sure we get those cleaned up before we execute any of that.
Yeah, it looks like it's part of Resolution Thirty-six nineteen.
We'll clean that up. I'm sure that's our...
We don't, thank you.
Well, otherwise, I was at Jerome High School the other day, and I saw the SRO there. And, you know, they're there all the time, making sure that, you know, kids, even in the summertime, whenever it is, are being cared for. They had a lot of athletes in and out of the building, and everybody was, you know, checking in to see how things were going. So I know those SROs play a tremendous role in the school community, and they really do a great job.
They really do. It's very unique from other aspects of our police department. They're obviously involved in law enforcement, but also a great deal of mentoring, bridging the gap between police, citizens, the youth. So, yeah, it's definitely a great program.
Those are some of the most plugged-in officers in this community, because they are in the hallway, they're the eyes and the ears of citizens. It's a fantastic program. So any other questions? Jane, did you have something?
No, just a comment, which I found fascinating in looking, and I'm sure the public who may have an opportunity to look at this, the role that the SRO plays that's laid out in the contract is so specific, but so complex and so huge in all the things they do. As you said, they're not only just there to make sure for the safety, but they become guidance counselor and mentor and safety officer and friend and, you know, imagine to have the best friend of a child there as an officer. In so many ways, they impact. I was just fascinated to read the contract of all the duties that they have. So I would encourage the public to do the same if they wonder what our SROs do in the schools every day. It's an amazing amount of work, so...
Absolutely. And it's much different from some of our officers on the road, in that, just like you said, there's so many different things that are going on at that school. And when we signed up, we didn't exactly sign up to be a counselor, that type of mentor for, you know, a twelve-year-old who's going to come to you and give you all his or her problems. So absolutely.
Great. Anything else from council? Hearing nothing? Anne?
Ms. Aluto.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amoros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan. Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Resolution thirty-five dash nineteen. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Authorizing the city manager to cooperate with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Logan Union Franklin Thirty-three Smart Mobility Corridor Infrastructure Project.
I will introduce it. Megan?
Good evening, members of council. The Northwest Thirty-three Innovation Corridor Council of Governments and ODOT have collaborated on the design of the next phase of improvements along the Thirty-three Corridor between East Liberty and Dublin. These improvements will provide infrastructure and technology to further develop the Smart Mobility Corridor. The work includes installation of sixty poles throughout the entire corridor and ITS cabinets along the corridor, electrical services to provide power to each location, fiber service laterals to provide a connection to the mainline fiber, and dedicated short-range communications roadside units that will be purchased via a separate contract. So that's the scope of the project. Included in your packet is a map that shows the proposed pole locations along Thirty-three within the Dublin Corporation limits. The estimate for the project is three point six million, and the project's being funded with fifty percent state funds and fifty percent US DOT ATC MTD grant funds.
Easy for you to say, yeah.
You should practice that all day.
ODOT tentatively plans to bid this project in July, with construction beginning late summer/fall. We anticipate having all the poles installed by the end of the year and the roadside units installed by the end of the year, with construction wrapping up next spring. This agreement grants consent to ODOT for the construction of this project along Thirty-three within the Dublin Corp. limits, and staff recommends approval of this resolution.
Questions from council? Kathy?
Thanks. So this is step one. This is good infrastructure, and I know the COG has been working on some longer terms, so this finishes sort of, what does that enable?
So I would say this is really step two. There's been a lot of work to get fiber installed. That was step one.
Okay.
Or what I would consider step one, to get fiber installed throughout the entire corridor. This provides the infrastructure to mount the roadside units, and it's those roadside units that will be installed, it's approximately every three thousand feet throughout the entire corridor, to provide continuous coverage throughout the entire corridor. And those roadside units communicate with onboard units that will be installed at a later date next year in vehicles that travel throughout the corridor. So those communications can occur between the roadside units and the vehicles. So that's the infrastructure and the vehicles.
Excuse me, so these communication will be manned and potentially some autonomous vehicles at that point, or?
So this is connected vehicle technology. The units will speak to one another and provide messages to the vehicle, to the driver of incidents ahead. Just for example, we're vetting the different applications that will be implemented throughout the corridor. Some of that'll be based on budget, but we're vetting the different applications. It could be that there's a lane closure ahead, so the roadside unit would identify that there's a lane closure ahead, send a message to the vehicle, curb warning ahead, stop traffic ahead. So those types of messages would be communicated to the driver, and the driver would be aware and know that they need to stop ahead, for example.
And most of those vehicles in this Phase Three are government vehicles? They could be private, they could be...
All of that.
All of that.
A combination of the city Dublin fleet, Union Fleet, Union County fleet, City of Marysville's fleet, Honda employees. I think they're up to two hundred and greater that they'll be installing on Honda employee personal vehicles and Honda vehicles of employees that perhaps live in Dublin and travel the corridor to work in, at the Honda plant. So a combination of all that. We have a lot of work to do to identify all of the vehicles, but we have, you know, started garnering all the different vehicle possibilities.
Thank you.
Megan, I had a question about the poles themselves. So I would imagine this technology is going to change quite rapidly, and they're probably not going to put forty- and fifty-foot poles on every stretch of a highway in six hundred feet increments. Was that what you said, six hundred feet?
It's about three thousand.
Three thousand feet increments, all the way...
Depends on the terrain and all that, but...
Okay, all the way across the country. So when the technology is sufficient, that the technology that's mounted on these poles is no longer useful, who is it incumbent upon to remove said poles? So we can minimize our visual clutter.
So I guess one point to note is, we are providing flexibility for the use of these poles. The roadside units need to be installed twenty-five feet above ground, and these poles are going to be taller than that. So we're providing flexibility so that in the future, maybe we install cameras or other technology that comes along. But long-term, there have been separate discussions with ODOT about who maintains what, you know, what's the COG going to be responsible for maintaining? What's ODOT going to be responsible for maintaining, and who owns what? And those discussions, because it is ODOT right-of-way and it's infrastructure that's being installed in ODOT right-of-way, landed with ODOT owning the poles. So they would be theirs to maintain and remove.
So would they likely then lease them out to cellular companies that might have repeaters on them?
Actually, the COG itself was able to retain top position of the pole, which is very valuable real estate. So we'll see how that transfers in the future. But, you know, you could, yeah, probably as soon as you put up technology, it's no longer as valid.
I would just like to see some language that if, in the event that these poles are not being utilized, that they be removed, and that somebody be responsible for that removal. Not, you know, it may be a very long time from now, I don't know. I mean, I'm in a hurry to get them down. I just don't want, you know, I suspect if we had some, in our telephone poles, right, if there was something that you had to take your stuff off the pole if you weren't using it, there would be a lot less stuff on poles, and we would have a lot less visual clutter in all of our right-of-ways. So I would just like to apply that kind of thinking here, that use them as long as they're useful, and when they're not useful anymore, let's make sure that we get them down.
Anything else?
No, but I just want to say, I agree with Chris, because I think that that's, those are pretty close together. Those are pretty big poles, and as we add this technology, I think we're all thinking that it's a, it's a great advantage to be able to have and drive those cars. But then what is the trade-off in the way of, as they said when, I think in Arizona, when they put up all the lines across the desert, and the architect out there said, "I'm just going to turn my building around." I think it was Frank Lloyd Wright said, "I'm going to turn my building around so I don't have to see the visual clutter of the electric lines and the phone lines." It changes the landscape. So it is important for us to think about the impact on the other end of this new technology and cameras and poles and what it looks like on the streetscape. So I think that's a good conversation starter.
Agree, and we did have extensive discussions about the aesthetics of these poles. So the taller poles are settled to be the typical steel pole that will be painted Dublin bronze, because we have taken great efforts to make sure that the infrastructure along Thirty-three within Dublin is that Dublin bronze color. So the proposed poles within the Dublin Corporation limit will be bronze. Outside of Dublin and west of Dublin will be the typical steel appearance. But we could definitely take that discussion about the requirement to remove the poles to the COG.
I have no issue with putting them up.
I think that ship has sailed, actually, in the agreement between the COG and ODOT. I really think at the end of the day, the poles belong, in fact, I don't think, I know that the poles belong to ODOT at the end of the day, and they will determine whether they stay or not. I would tell you, they would be highly motivated to not leave them in a right-of-way, particularly if they're not in use, because they could be a safety concern. So putting these kind of poles in the right-of-way, the way we're doing is very unusual for them, and an exception more so than the rule. So I don't, I don't think we're going to be able to influence that through these documents, but I think at the end of the day, ODOT's not going to want them there, which is really what we... I really believe, I can double-check the language, but I really thought there was discussion around, once they exceeded their useful life, that they wouldn't stay in place. But I'll double-check that.
Well, and if it's sailed, it's sailed. I don't mean to, you know, it's great technology, it's a great...
We've all been very conscientious about the look and all of that, as best you can be when you're putting up a bunch of poles in the, in the right-of-way. But I totally get where you're coming from.
Anything else from council? Ann?
Mr. Keenan? Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox? Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-six dash nineteen.
Authorizing amendment to the service agreement for NAPA Onsite Parts Equipment Center.
Daryl, welcome.
Enter.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of council. The resolution before you tonight is an extension authorized in the city manager to extend our service agreement that we currently have with NAPA. The operation of our facility, our fleet management, fleet management facility houses our current NAPA store, which also houses, or holds, I'm sorry, a full-time NAPA employee who does all of our research, acquisition, and everything to provide the inventory for us to be able to successfully manage our fleet. The proposed amendment updates the references to the new Sourcewell, formerly NJPA, contract and extends the current agreement between NAPA and the city of Dublin to January twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-three. Be happy to entertain any questions or concerns.
I will introduce the legislation, Ann. I'm sorry, I always skip that. Any questions from council? Kathy?
How similar is this to what other cities are doing, or what's, or maybe what's unique about our relationship here?
Well, this, this was brought about in two thousand and thirteen, when we first took fleet from another department and made it stand-alone. Our technicians, our fleet administrator, were always scrambling for parts, and it was kind of a, maybe we have it on hand, maybe we don't. This, this solidifies our inventory. We do not have to pay for the parts that are on the shelves in the parts room until we get them. They're in there as consignment items. There's other municipalities across the country that is doing this. Just recently this year, ODOT has entered into an agreement with Sourcewell and NAPA to provide in-house parts stores in all their districts across the state.
My recollection is, we were losing a lot of man hours chasing things. So the time, the overtime, the extra time that was involved, and whoever was doing the work stopping to go out and go pick the pieces up. Do we work with the schools on this as well? Remember that?
We, we have worked with the schools. They come over and when, when and if they purchase something, it's billed directly to the schools. They have a, a totally separate agreement with them.
So I remember my, one of my big concerns at the time we did this was, these are highly theft, theftability kind of items that people want. And so I know it's caged, I know there's a very strong inventory control which continues, and...
Absolutely.
Do you have any experience over the last year or two in terms of how, how are we, are any parts walking off?
There's been no shrinkage from NAPA, like I say, there's nothing, everything that's in there is NAPA's.
It belongs to them.
It belongs to them.
If it shrinks, it's their shrinkage.
Absolutely, and it's, it's card access controlled.
Thank you. I visited this program, and it is a good program. Stopped in and saw what you were doing.
Thank you.
Is there plenty of space for their inventory? Is there, do we have excess room? Is there, could, I guess what I'm getting at is, could it ever be advantageous to, for NAPA to service clients other than us out of that facility that might be a, you know, a rent revenue generator?
There, no ma'am, there, with the way the current contract written, it's written specifically for the city of Dublin or any divisions or departments within the city. So our current sales rep there also provides other departments such as parks, streets, and utilities, services as needed.
Any other questions from council? Hearing nothing. Ann?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox? Mr. Keenan? Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-seven.
Mayor, if I, if I may, while, while Daryl's still up here, I'm embarrassing for a second. I was going to bring it up a little later. So our fleet, our fleet was just named by Government Fleet as the number-one small fleet in the country. And then overall was named number-two small fleet in the country, and just to put that in proportionality, Denver, Colorado was number-one. So if you think about the size of fleet, a city that size must operate. For us to be named number-two overall is pretty significant. So I just want to congratulate Daryl while he's standing up there and embarrass him, and the team, and then everyone throughout the city who uses fleet, obviously contributes to that and how we, everyone has a role in taking care of it. So I just wanted to congratulate Daryl and the team.
That is fantastic. Thank you, Daryl, for everything you do. Every time you see a Dublin anything, it is always clean, professional, polished, and it is noticed, so your work is exceptional. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Resolution thirty-seven dash nineteen.
Appointing members to the city of Dublin Decennial Census Complete Count Committee.
Look at that, we have Nancy at the podium.
Wow.
Very unusual.
Good evening, members of council. You may recall during the two thousand twenty census presentation at the May sixth meeting, it was recommended that council establish a complete count committee to assist with the upcoming census. And at the dais, you have before you a list of names of community representatives who have agreed to participate on the committee. And tonight, staff is asking council to consider confirmation of these appointments, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just don't know about that list thing.
Oh, I see.
No, we don't.
It's in your email.
Oh, it's in the email. I know I saw the list somewhere, but then I didn't, I didn't see it. Okay. So do I make a motion just to add these people's names to the, then I would move that we add to section one the following individuals to be appointed to the city of Dublin's Complete Count Committee. Christina Aludo, Jenny Amros, Doug Baker, Brittany Harris, Amy Cram, Jill Cranstuber, Dr. Randy Leidy, Dr. Benjamin Pachter, Eric Richter. You can sit in the back, Eric, we're going to find you anyway, buddy. And Dr. Reverend Stephen Smith.
I'll second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan? Ms. Fox? Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
And is that voting on, that's the only vote we need to hold, or do we need to now pass the resolution? That's it?
So I have a quick question about that. Well, is that a, a committee that will grow and expand over time, or is...
It could. It's at the committee's discretion if they want to add subcommittees. There will be an orientation this summer, and that will all be discussed with the representative from the census, Mark Boyd, who made the presentation.
Yeah, I think that, that outstanding group, and thanks for people agreeing to serve, because that, it's very important. I can also see as the group begins that there might be an opportunity or need to, to really, you know, add others and an advisory role, so that'd be great, wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the other portion of the agenda. Dana, you just want to take it away?
Yes, thank you, mayor. On March twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, Deputy Chief Justin Pis was appointed as the interim chief of police for the city of Dublin. Previously, in November of two thousand eighteen, council approved the creation of the deputy chief of police position and subsequently waived the competitive process for the appointment of then Lieutenant Justin Pis to the same position effective January one, two thousand nineteen. The creation of the deputy chief position and the subsequent appointment were part of the police department's multi-year strategic plan to enhance our succession planning efforts to include leadership development for the next chief of police. Since his promotion, I monitored Deputy Chief Pis and the intent of evaluating his leadership skills, potentially assume the role of chief of police of the department sometime in the future. And with that potential future now before us, on May twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, Deputy Chief Pis underwent a thorough police assessment conducted by the FERL group, who rated him excellent in his assessment, and that was attached in the packet that I, that I, and to the memo that I provided you. During his tenure as the interim chief of police, and in my memo, as I stated to you, I think Deputy Chief Pis' leadership has certainly been tested with several real-life events, and he's performed in exemplary manner. Deputy Chief Pis' tenure with the Dublin Police Department has been exemplary, is exemplary since joining it in two thousand five, after he had served with the city of Oregon, Ohio. While serving the citizens of the city of Dublin, he earned a promotion to corporal in two thousand seven, sergeant in two thousand nine, and to lieutenant in two thousand fifteen. His experience includes work as a patrol officer, patrol shift supervisor, and is the first supervisor of Community Impact Unit, or CIU as we call it. He also oversaw the accreditation process on a couple occasions. So as lieutenant, he worked as operations bureau commander and support services bureau commander, commanding both sworn bureaus within our agency, and that would include sworn personnel as well as civilian personnel. Deputy Chief Pis obtained his bachelor's degree from Bowling Green State University, and is currently a candidate for a master's of business administration with a focus on leadership and organizational change. He's a graduate of the Ohio Association of Chiefs of Police Leadership Courses Supervisory Training and Education Program, the Police Executive Leadership College, as well as Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command. So as a result of his hard work to assemble the appropriate level of training, police, and civilian education, diverse policing experience and leadership experience, given his intricate knowledge of the Dublin Police Department, its inter-agency relationships, and the Dublin community as a whole, and having earned the trust and confidence of the agency members, his peers, and the collective leadership of the city of Dublin, I respectfully request the formal waiver of the competitive selection process in accordance with section six point oh six A of the revised Dublin Charter to allow the immediate appointment of Deputy Chief Justin Pis to chief of police. And I would ask that council approve that by motion and vote, so that I could make that appointment.
Any comments or questions from council? I will strongly, wholeheartedly support that request by making a motion that we waive the competitive selection process for appointment of chief of police. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Ann?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Well, members of council, I want to thank you for that on behalf of Justin and his family and for the city of Dublin. And we are going to pin you, given that, on July the tenth, July tenth, four to six p.m., I think, somewhere in that timeframe. We'll get information out about that, so there'll be a pinning and promotion ceremony. But I'll sign the order tonight after the council meeting. Thank you for your support.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Riverside Crossing Park update. Matthew?
Tough act to follow.
Yes, indeed.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. In your packet, there was, provided an update on the Riverside Crossing Park East Phase One project. You'll recall back in December of two thousand and eighteen. Final site plan was reviewed and approved by city council after some feedback from council and, and the public. We had to do some catch-up work from some of the add-ons that were included into that final site plan. So before you this evening, one of the things that council requested was to review the plans, once they achieved a sixty percent completion or approximately thereof. We have a summary of modifications that were provided to you in your, in your packet. The majority of those additions or modifications were requested, as I, as I alluded to, as part of the site plan approval. We did adjust some of the sizes to the elements, scaled the design, added some details to more of the complex features. Those were all very minor in scope. There was one exception to a modification, which was made to the waterfall feature on the west side of the Lower Plaza. I do have some renderings, and I'd be happy to go through that with you. If not, I do, I know that there were some drawings submitted. If there's a desire for me to go through that drawing, I'd be happy to do that for you this evening.
What's the council's pleasure? Let's see, let's see, Matt.
So the, Aryan red on the slide indicates the Lower Plaza area within the site plan itself. You recall the actual waterfall was just on the east side of the bridge landing, to the north of the bridge landing as you approach the Riverside Drive corridor. Here's a picture of the rendering itself, and what you will see here is, this is the original rendering. So at the bottom of the waterfall here, there was a trough which would collect all of the water into a pool that was submerged with a drainage system to take it back to the mechanical system. And then the retaining wall outside of that area here was just to incorporate the water and hold it in a holding surge tank that you could see above water. The difficulty of that is the elevation at which the water would sit, and the drainage system would have to be pulled into a gravity-fed system from that point. Also, the other concern was during the off-season, we would have an empty pool of concrete. So unsightly features there gave us some incentive to think of a little bit outside of the box on incorporating. In this feature, you can see it a little bit easier, this is the old rendering, but this wall here would now become a second-tiered skimmer waterfall, with this centerpiece of concrete being raised to its elevation, pervading a skimmer effect over this, this, this secondary wall into a drainage system that is submerged underneath the patio system itself, completely hidden, and nobody would see it. What that gives us in the wintertime is this whole concrete area here becomes a completely flat platform. concrete area here becomes a completely flat platform with a graded system that would allow us to provide some temporary landscaping and different types of things during the off-season when the water isn't flowing. So that is, in essence, what the enhancements to this area include. I think it's an enhancement aesthetically. It adds a little bit more of the water in a more dimensional perspective. So we are incorporating this into the plan to date, pending any comments or concerns from council.
Matt, this, so the water will essentially shed across in a, you know, one-inch kind of fashion across this concrete. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And it's intended that people would have the ability to interact with that water?
That's correct.
On some level. So do we have concerns about algae buildup and things of that nature that would make that surface not highly desirable and very slippery and?
If it is not maintained properly, yes. We will have that same algae issue regardless of whether it's a pool or a flat surface. Water quality, chemically treated, et cetera, plus the routine maintenance of brushing and so forth could eliminate that problem.
Are there any Department of Health issues, like rabbits dancing or whatever, dancing rabbits?
No.
But if they're interacting with the water?
If they're interacting with it, it's one thing. If they're actually engaged in it and it is designed for that interactive motion of play, then it would become an issue. But in this case, it is not designed for that interaction.
So are there, is there the ability in this system to chemically treat this water?
Yes.
So Matt, the black portion of this, what material is that that I'm looking at?
It's a stained concrete. Once the stained concrete is wet, it will turn a sheer black. When it's dry, it's a little bit more of a grayish, charcoal grayish color.
Matt, it's been my experience in chemically-treated water with stained concrete. Those two things don't typically play very well together. Normally, there's, you know, calcium buildup. There's a number of things that happen that make it no longer appear like, you know, does it have to be concrete? Could it be some other material?
It could be. It will give you a different effect of the water flowing over it. But yes, I think it could be a poured surface of some kind, similar to our playground systems and such.
I just don't know how black's gonna look. If we chemically treat the water, the black's gonna get chalky and gray, and it's gonna have calcium, you know, there's gonna be a visual water line on it at some point, wherever that is.
There's the alternative to a slate-type of a surface that is a little bit less porous than concrete would be.
Well, and it would allow you to clean it. If you did a slate, you could power wash it without compromising the color. You know, typically stained concrete, either comes stained and it's stained clear-through, but it is not at all resistant to fade from the sunlight. So I know when the Limited was originally built out on Broad Street, they stained all of the sidewalks black. They ordered black concrete. And they weren't black very long. They turned to a kind of a blue-gray. But if we used a natural material that was genuinely colored, if it were like a leather finish granite, or, you know, slate or some other product, you can clean it, and it, you can remove the unsightliness.
I think that's very feasible.
So the width of that landing, that the black concrete as it is now, it has to be that width because it's covering the mechanicals? Is that what I'm understanding here?
No, the mechanicals are actually back on the far southern end of the plaza itself. The piping system will go underneath the plaza. There are no mechanicals outside on this end of the plaza itself.
So why do we have that landing there? I'm not quite sure. I understand if that, if, I've seen where the benches, I'm pointing here, I know you can see my finger. So, I mean, what is the?
Is this water retention, isn't it?
Is it water retention under that?
It's for water.
Water retention. The primary objective here is when you have a waterfall that is dropping at that length, you're gonna have a lot of spray. And the wet will protrude beyond where you intend it to be. So this is to be along the splash zone of that waterfall. The secondary fall that I was alluding to would be a very, very short fall distance, and it wouldn't create that same splash effect. You can actually skim it in such a way that it is, it comes over the edge and then through underneath of it. So it doesn't actually come out over top.
Is that actually all fall? It looks, it appears to be eight or ten feet, if the scale of people is roughly correct. Is that waterfall the entire distance, or does it, you know, follow the wall?
Oh, it will follow the wall.
So it will roll down the wall more than a waterfall?
Yes. There is a discussion now as to breaking up that fall to create a little bit more of a vibrant whitewater and noise effect, so that it's not just a sheer waterfall that you can't see really, or hear, or engage with. So we're talking about the incorporation of some of those elements to create that whitewater effect.
But at no place on this is it actually a waterfall?
No.
It's a water trail.
It's a water trail, yes.
What were you thinking in the winter, you were saying, in the off-season? So this is gonna give you an opportunity to do, for instance, what?
If you can imagine the pool, if it were empty during the winter months, it would be basically a trough that is empty. And you could put some landscaping in it to hopefully mitigate some of the unsightliness. By elevating this up, it looks a little bit more intentional as if it were designed for a landscape or some type of display of some kind, whether it's seasonal or otherwise. Similar to the plaza at the pump, the townhome pump there at Bridge and High, being able to light it for holidays and Christmas and things like that, it gives us a little bit more of that option.
So are you using a black granite paver? Is that right, in that lower pole? Is that what you guys selected?
We haven't selected it, but based on the feedback we're seeing this evening, it's either a black granite, or a slate, or some kind of a natural material that would minimize some of the fading.
So that water's gonna sort of run over that like an inch thick? Is, when it's an operational inch or two thick? Is that what we're gonna see?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so you can address Chris's concerns with the material?
Yes, I will take that back to the design group, and we will incorporate that in.
Okay.
One last quick question, Matt?
Sure.
You were saying that you were looking at some dimensional things along the wall to create the whitewater. Were you thinking, is that where the water might fall, hit something, then splash off and go that way? And that's, so that's a serious consideration of the group. Seems like a nice idea.
That's a, it's a good idea, but it's always a three-to-one ratio. So you need the adhesion factor, so it'll actually work, or else that receptacle pole has to be huge because of the splash factor. So you gotta be very careful on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
So with that, and the other modifications that were provided in your packet, if we can receive, respectfully request to receive comments by next Monday, if possible, we'd like to continue to progress these designs forward so we can meet the deadlines that we're up against.
Matt, do you have an image of where the access for utility vehicles on the south side, where that, where that opening got moved to?
I don't have it with me, except the one that we have in the actual video itself. I don't have a rendering of it, per se.
Can you just tell me where it went?
Pardon me?
Can you just tell me where it went?
It's literally on the south side of the elevation of the plaza.
Because it was on the west side.
That's correct. In order for us to minimize impacts to?
The south side seems like a much better idea, because the, on the west side, it came out onto the frequently-traveled footpath, hopefully frequently-traveled footpath.
Yeah, that was discussed at the site plan. It was, it was a very minor adjustment, but certainly one that's incorporated into the plans today.
I had one other quick question. The comment about removal of the sloped stone walls along Riverside Drive, was that a cost factor? Was that a, I think that was number five and six on your list of modifications?
Yes, you'll recall, during the discussions of the basic site plan, as we progressed to the final site plan, there was discussion about doing something along Riverside Drive. And that sidewalk area adjacent to the lawn space was one area that was originally discussed as a, more of a tiered type of step-down system, which was not favorable. So the design team went back and produced, as you recall, a very elaborate promenade area along Riverside Drive. That is about a four or five million dollar add-on to the entire project. So what we are trying to do in this phase is to incorporate a slope of that lawn just up to the walkway itself until we get to the point of funding that project.
So it's prepping it for?
That's correct.
That sort of thing. Because I know one of the things that we talked about, just the proximity, we talked about the North Market, the concept here, that there's just an opportunity for people to buy some lunch, go sit at the park, et cetera, so forth. So I know that was part of the desire to create those little oasis. So I don't know if there is, short-term, given that cost ability, to do some type of seeding or something in there that becomes... Will there be any separation between Riverside Drive and the park then, visually, or will it just be a graded slope that's likely seeded, I think, grass, turf?
In the interim, it will be a contiguous from sidewalk down to lawn. So there won't be any hills or ramps or anything. It'll be a very slight grade up to that elevation. But we can incorporate benches. We can incorporate some temporary type of structures in there. We can bring those back as far as what those might look like. Perhaps when we get to the phase where we are actually constructing the lawn space itself, we can bring that back and take a look at that.
Could we look at at least a hedging material or something that provided that separation that maybe wouldn't be the cost of the granite planters, but at least some, you know, there's something, and there's a safety, a perceived safety factor, if nothing else, when you're sitting behind a planted area separated from heavy traffic. It just, it feels a little different.
When I mentioned it would be contiguous and it would be straight from the sidewalk, I was talking about hardscape. But there is, by your point, putting landscape in along that edge there to create that hedgerow, for sure, yes.
That's already in the plan, is it not?
Hmm.
They were in the planters, I thought.
They're in the site plan. They're in planters, which are hardscape. So there's a fairly significant amount of investment that has to get it to that level. But we can do something in interim to create a landscape edge that is a pleasing environment.
And it creates those, it creates those little respite areas to eat lunch behind it as well. So you do have that feeling like I've entered the park?
Sure.
And not have to go to the other side. So maybe there's something that's, you know, financially feasible, and, because I think creating, I think we'll miss that opportunity if we don't do that. I think that will, sitting on the grass only works here some of the time. I think most great urban parks, there's an entry. You know, great urban park, you don't get into just at any point, right? You come through a gate, you come through something, and you are now in the park. And if we could do that by planting, something simple as hedge planting, or maybe, you know, if we can't do the full-scale planter boxes at this point, maybe, you know, a short decorative fence or something that would make you feel like you were either in the park or you were out of the park.
Can I, can I suggest that, I just see costs going up, but I, I think that, I get what you want to do. I'd like them to continue the plan for what's been agreed to this point, for the phases that we've agreed to and are budgeted. I'd like to come back, look at this separately, separate from what's been budgeted, separate from the sixty percent plan and what's being developed now, so that we can continue down that road. And then we can come back with this as a possible addendum to what we're doing. So it doesn't slow down design, number one. Number two, it's budgeted separately, so you know what your cost is that you're asking for there. I don't think it's gonna be a big deal. But it's that, it's that much more that we gotta figure out how to work into the capital budget. So we will try to report back on that. Is it feasible to report on that maybe during the CIP process, or the back end of the CIP process? We could probably treat that as like an addendum to the bid or something, or alternate, I mean, is the word I'm trying to say, so.
And Dana, does it make sense, as long as we're thinking about when they design that slope or whatever, that that's the intent, that we would want something like that?
Yeah, it does, but I, I thought we were talking mostly a landscaping aspect to this, that ties into the slope. Or are we talking about resloping in order to accommodate additional separation?
I'm sorry. I'm saying I agree with that, the timing of that. But just the design, you've heard sort of what we are trying to get at. So when they design that and grade that and think about that, we can think the longer term.
Okay. We'll get back to you.
Yeah, I think originally, and I think this came up earlier, we were talking about some kind of landscape buffer between the streetscape and the?
I remember, that's my recollection.
Actual park, and that could be a regal privet hedge. It could be a hedge of, you know, dwarf lilacs. It can be all kinds of stuff. But that sense of privacy is sort of important, but, you know, but that's not a real big expense either.
We'll get back to you on how it may or may not affect timing and so forth, and, okay.
Okay, so Matt, you need to hear back from us if we have comments on these nineteen identified amendments you'd like to?
Or any other items that are of concern, or any kind of feedback on the design. At the sixty percent mark, the plans are in the council planning room, for your reference. We'd be happy to meet with you on-site to discuss if necessary as well.
And we need to try to get to you within the next week.
That would be helpful.
All right.
Do you have those plans digitally?
We do.
Can you send them to Jenny, please? And could you ask Jenny to please load those in Board Pack? Thank you.
Will do.
Is that it? All right, thank you, Matt. Sawmill Corridor Study, Dana? Megan? Got all kinds of movement. Jenny? Joanne?
Good evening, members of council. Thank you for your time tonight. We are here this evening to bring with to you the outcomes of the Sawmill Road Corridor Study, and specifically the recommendations and the next steps for the study. The city initiated the study in two thousand and fifteen due to concerns regarding the access to the west side of Sawmill Road at the Snoffar Road intersection. The study has been led by engineering staff, and with the support of our consultant, Jacob's Engineering, and specifically their project manager, Mike Flickinger, who is here with us tonight. The outline of the presentation this evening will cover a brief overview of the timeline of the study itself, the goals of the project, and the technical analysis and alternatives studied that led to the recommendations of the study. Then we will discuss the next steps and wrap up with any questions that you may have. So, the project area. This project started with the focus being at Snoffar Road due to the access concerns to the Dublin Village Center. The study boundaries were generally from Village Parkway to the south and bounded by two seventy to the north, and was centered, again, around Sawmill, or Snoffar Road, excuse me. The addendum, the first addendum to the study, there were a few of them, extended the study area to the north to include the Bright Road intersection. And then addendum number two was when the city partnered with the City of Columbus to bound, to extend the project boundaries to one sixty-one to the south and Hard Road to the north. So here's the general timeline of the study itself. Again, Dublin initiated the study in two thousand and fifteen. And the length of time, so we just concluded the study in June of two thousand and nineteen, the length of time that it took to, from inception to completion, indicates the complexity, the number of jurisdictions involved, including Dublin, Columbus, the Ohio Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. So there was no shortage of alphabet soup on this project. Because of that, extensive coordination was required. And as you can see on the timeline, there were a series of coordination meetings, one, two, three, four, five of them, as we made our way through the progress, or through the study, which indicates the number of comments and the issues that we were dealing with. So the study goals were to enhance access to and from Sawmill Road at Bright Road. at Bright Road, and at Snoffler Road, to address congestion in the corridor and to improve mobility throughout the corridor. At this point, in order to discuss the technical components of the study, I would like to introduce Mike Flickinger, who is our project manager from Jacobs Engineering. Mike happens to be a Dublin resident, resides in Tartan Ridge. So he is very well, very familiar with our goals and objectives of the city and has a vested interest in our success.
Okay, thank you for the introduction, Jenny. For the rest of the presentation, we've been focusing on the analysis, the decisions that we made, the alternatives we developed, and how we got to the final recommendations that are included in the study. So first, first key decision we had to make was, does Sawmill Road need to be widened? So Sawmill Road currently is a five-lane facility. It's generally two through lanes in each direction with a center turn lane. The number of lanes vary throughout the corridor depending on the turn lanes at various intersections. And also, just to further complicate it, the number of through lanes are inconsistent throughout the corridor because, you know, some stretches of the corridor have more than two through lanes. Currently, Sawmill Road lacks sufficient number of travel lanes and sufficient turn lanes, and it suffers from recurring peak hour congestion. One of the options we considered to alleviate this congestion was to widen Sawmill Road to a seven-lane facility. So that would add, that would add one through lane in each direction. It would still retain the center turn lane that's there currently, and you'd still have the various turn lanes at the intersections. The extra through lane would provide increased capacity. But along with that increased capacity, it would also induce more traffic to the corridor. It's essentially the "if you build it, they will come" scenario. And it just further exemplifies the fact that it's difficult to build your way out of congestion. The analysis showed that to be, that there would be slight level of service improvements in the area. However, the level of service wouldn't improve enough to get to the preferred design criteria. And then the analysis also showed that there would be a slight improvement in the delay throughout the corridor. Finally, the analysis showed that the widening Sawmill Road would provide negligible relief to the surrounding roadways, the parallel roadways. So it wouldn't really provide a benefit to the local and regional transportation network. Concurrent with determining if Sawmill Road should be widened to seven lanes, we also looked at a potential crossing of I-270. This crossing would be west of Sawmill Road. I just want to note that, for the purposes of this study, this crossing is a completely conceptual idea. The final details of it would have to be worked out in a future project that the city would have to undertake if they wanted to move forward. At that time, you'd determine the exact location, the length of the crossing, the type of the crossing, all in the city's need to balance benefit and opportunities with minimizing the impacts. As included in this study, this crossing would connect, it would connect Tuller on the south, sorry, a little high there, Tuller on the south, Emerald Parkway on the north. The analysis showed that this crossing would have some traffic operational benefits to the corridor. It would reduce the congestion along Sawmill Road. It would improve the operations, it would improve the mobility, and it would improve the throughput through the corridor. Perhaps most shocking, actually, to me, was the amount of relief it could provide. It could provide up to 20% relief to Sawmill Road on a trap for traffic volume. And then another key factor is it actually does, unlike the seven-lane Sawmill Road, it does provide relief to the adjacent parallel roadways, specifically Riverside Drive. It provides a significant amount of relief to Riverside Drive. So a crossing in this situation could be a good regional and local traffic network benefit. Also want to point out at this time that in the meetings we had with ODOT, through their reviews and through the meetings with them, ODOT staff saw no issues with this crossing, and it's just general location. And actually, were quite pleased and encouraged by the relief that it would provide and the benefit that it would provide to Sawmill, provide, sorry, to Sawmill Road. In addition to the traffic operational benefits, a proposed crossing of Sawmill Road could provide access and connectivity benefits that perhaps a widened Sawmill Road cannot provide. Provides an additional pedestrian and bicycle crossing of I-270, so that could supplement existing crossings at Post Road and Rings Road. It would also provide an additional access point into the downtown area. And in fact, the analysis shows that it actually attracts more trips to Dublin's downtown area as, as compared to a seven-lane Sawmill Road. And another key factor is that it distributes the trips better across the network, as we mentioned in the last slide with giving relief to the other roadways. So when compared to a seven-lane Sawmill Road, this crossing provided better operational benefits, better mobility, and it provided access and connectivity benefits. And it all did it with fewer right-of-way impacts, fewer maintenance of traffic impacts, and fewer utility impacts for a seven-lane Sawmill Road. So considering those factors, we recommended that a potential crossing of I-270 be considered and constructed in lieu of a seven-lane Sawmill Road. Those decisions, that recommendation was carried forward through the rest of our analysis. Once we decided what we were going to do with Sawmill Road, then the next step was to go to the intersection alternatives. So within this study, the study consisted of two types of intersection alternatives, conventional intersection alternatives and innovative intersection alternatives. Those innovative intersection alternatives were really confined to two specific intersections throughout the corridor, the Bright Road intersection and the Snoffler Road intersection. For context, within the context of this study, we're considering conventional intersection improvements to be additional turn lanes, storage bay extensions, and traffic signal optimizations. And then within the context of this study, please consider the innovative alternatives to be roundabouts or combinations of roundabouts, median U-turns, or quadrant roads. At Bright Road, we proposed five innovative alternatives, innovative intersection alternatives, sorry. These, that gets repeated a lot, it's kind of a mouthful. Of those five, through conversations with Dublin and Columbus, three of them were dropped from consideration and two were carried forward for further analysis. So the three intersections at Bright Road that were dropped for, that were dropped from consideration, they were dropped due to the negative impacts to traffic congestion for some movements. There were some long diversions for people to make left turns off of Sawmill Road. And then finally, there were significant right-of-way impacts. Similar to Bright Road, at Snoffler Road, we also recommended five, or we recommended five innovative intersection alternatives. And again, three of those alternatives were dropped and two were carried forward for further consideration. At Snoffler, they were dropped due to weaving problems. They were dropped due to negative impacts to traffic operations. And they were dropped due to the fact that it would probably require more traffic signals. And no one was really super receptive to that in that stretch, so. So considering those general, conventional, innovative concepts, we developed four corridor alternatives. And this is where the names get even perhaps a little more of a mouthful. The first one we analyzed is named Conventional Corridor Alternative A. And this alternative consists of providing conventional intersection improvements throughout the corridor. So first, I want to note that, I acknowledge that the corridor is long enough that it's kind of difficult to fit everything into one place and still retain some of the detail. Not too bad on a big screen here, but on a smaller screen, it's a little rough. So this alternative and the next alternative I'm going to discuss, you can find a broken-down version at a larger scale in Appendix J of the study. It's a little easier to see it in that context. So just to help orient everybody, I think we all know generally where we are, but... I'm having trouble hitting that screen, so. North on this exhibit is to the left. We have, Hard Road is over here, 270 right here, generally in the middle. Here's State Route 161, and then Sawmill Road, cutting from left to right, across the exhibit. This alternative, as I mentioned earlier, being conventional, it added turn lanes, turn lane extensions, and traffic signal optimization throughout the corridor. Through consultation with Dublin and Columbus, this alternative was dropped from further consideration. It failed to provide, it failed to meet one of the key criteria of the study, and that was that it failed to provide a new direct access to Dublin's downtown area. Conventional Corridor Alternative B is very similar to Conventional Corridor Alternative A with the exception of, this alternative provided a fourth leg at the Snoffler Road intersection. So again, to help orient everybody, north is to the left. Again, here's Hard Road, 270, State Route 161, Sawmill Road from left to right. And then here's the fourth leg at Snoffler Road. One of the key components of that leg at the intersection is that you do now have a direct access to the downtown area. Of the four alternatives that we analyzed, this alternative actually performed the best in regards to level of service. And it actually improved the most intersections as compared to the current conditions. So this alternative was recommended, or carried forward and considered for recommendation. The innovative corridors, similarly to the conventional alternatives, we developed two innovative alternatives. Again, kind of squished onto one page here. So if you refer to Appendix T of your study, you'll find similarly, they'll be broken down into multiple sheets at a larger scale, and the detail's a little easier to see in those appendices. Again, to help orient everybody, it's north is to the left, Hard Road at the far left, 270, State Route 161, Sawmill Road. This alternative is actually fairly similar to the conventional intersection alternatives. The conventional intersections are provided at most of the intersections within the corridor, with the exception of, as previously noted, at Bright Road and at Snoffler Road. And this alternative, the innovative intersections that were considered are median U-turns. So you can, you can see them, like, here's the median U-turn in the vicinity of Bright Road. Here's Bright Road right here. Here's the median U-turn that would provide access to Bright Road. And then similarly, here's Snoffler. And then here's the median U-turn that's actually down near Federated and Bridge Park Avenue. And that would be the providing access to Snoffler Road. This alternative was not recommended to be carried forward. It did satisfy one of the key criteria, and that was, provided direct access down to the downtown area. However, although it did increase the throughput through the corridor, it actually increased the travel delay through the corridor. So that did not satisfy one of the main criteria of improving mobility and traffic operations. The final corridor alternative we considered was Innovative Corridor Alternative B. So this one is very similar to Innovative Corridor Alternative A. Again, we provided conventional intersection improvements at the majority of the intersections throughout the corridor. Except on this alternative, in lieu of median U-turns at Bright Road and at Snoffler Road, there are the bowtie alternative. So I'll point those out, but again, just to reorient everybody, again, north is to the left, just mix it up a little bit. State Route 161 is over here, Sawmill Road, or 270 is in the middle, Hard Road over here to the left, and here's Sawmill Road. Here at Bright Road, things get a little wide, and it's hard to fit everything on one page. So there's an inset here, which kind of throws it off on this exhibit. But essentially, the bowtie alternative is a roundabout on both the east side and west side of Sawmill Road. So left turns would actually make right turns, go through the roundabout, and come across Sawmill Road. So there would be a roundabout over in this area, which you can see the inset right here. And then originally, we showed a new roundabout on Bright Road, but through consultation with Dublin staff, it was recommended that, well, we already have a roundabout here, so this can be the western part of the bowtie. Snoffler Road is similar, except it's a little more compact. Again, here's a roundabout on the east side of Sawmill Road, and this is at the intersection with Kane Road. And then here's the roundabout on the west side of Sawmill Road, and this would be at the intersection with Dublin Center Drive. Both Columbus and ODOT noted some concerns with this particular alternative. Their, the biggest concern that came from Columbus is that there are a number of businesses and a number of residences that access the east side of Sawmill, making that left-hand turn from Sawmill Road onto Snoffler. And under this current configuration, left-hand turns would have been prohibited. So to get to the side, travelers would have to make right-hand turns, come through the roundabout, and go across and go left. That provided, traffic operations negatively affected it for those people on the east side of Sawmill. That was one of the big concerns that was noted. And then the second, a second concern noted specifically from ODOT is that to properly sign that, to let drivers know if you're going to make a left-hand turn, you need to be on the right side of the road, which is somewhat counterintuitive to most people. There just really wasn't enough opportunity to properly sign that from the interchange down to Sawmill Road. Acknowledging those challenges, knowing that they would be something that you could, you'd have to discuss and see if you could overcome. The fact that, except for those challenges, it did, this alternative did provide good level of service and it did meet all the criteria of the study, this alternative was recommended to be, or this alternative was carried forward and considered for recommendation. So both the Innovative Corridor Alternative B and the Conventional Corridor Alternative B met the study's goals. They addressed the traffic congestion, they addressed the mobility issues, and they enhanced access throughout the corridor. And actually, when you compare each of those alternatives to each other, some of the, each of them performs better than the other in certain characteristics. However, we decided, or we didn't, we recommended Conventional Corridor Alternative B. And the reason we recommend that alternative, there's a few reasons. Number one, it actually does perform better than Innovative Alternative B in terms of level of service and delay. Secondly, it does not negatively affect access to the residences and the businesses on the east side of Sawmill Road. As compared to Innovative Corridor Alternative B, the recommended alternative has fewer right-of-way impacts, or at least lessened right-of-way impacts. And then finally, the total cost, the total project cost of Conventional Corridor Alternative B, the recommended alternative, is lower than that for Innovative Alternative B. Okay, so to give you more of a, bit of a zoomed-in view of general improvements that we are recommending at Bright Road, since Bright Road is one of the intersections specifically added by scope or by addendum. To reorient everybody, because flipped it, north is now actually up. Here's Emerald Parkway over here on the left, Bright Road, Sawmill Road. So the recommended at Bright, recommended improvements at Bright Road. Widen Bright Road between Emerald Parkway and Sawmill Road to provide a second eastbound lane. Widen and restripe Bright Road and Sawmill Road to provide the recommended turn lanes as needed and to provide storage bay extensions. And then finally, widen Sawmill Road to provide a third southbound lane, which you can kind of see it right here. This third southbound lane would start at Bright Road and carry all the way down to I-270 and then eventually become the I-2, tie into the I-270 entrance ramp. Similarly, here's Sawmill Road. Again, to orient everybody, north is up. Here's Kane, Sawmill, Dublin Center Drive, and here's Sawmill Road, I mean, Snoffler Road, right here. The recommended improvements at Snoffler, perhaps the biggest eye-catcher is adding the fourth leg of the intersection to connect Dublin Center Drive to Sawmill Road. Widen Snoffler Road and widen Sawmill Road to provide the additional turn lanes and the turn lane, the storage bay extensions that we're recommending. turn lane, the storage bay extensions that we're recommending. Widen Snofford Road east of Sawmill Road to actually provide a, a second eastbound lane, and then a turn lane to Kane, and then these lanes would come back in, to merge back into one lane past Kane Road. I do want to note that in this alternative, similar to the condition today, there would be no left turns available from Snofford Road onto Sawmill Road, and there would be no through movement, through movements available, saw, from Snofford Road across Sawmill Road.
Can I stop you to understand what you just said?
Sure.
So if you're, you know, go back to that previous slide. So if you're coming from that Kane Road west, you can't turn left onto Sawmill, and you can't go across to Dublin Center. You can only do right turns, which is what there is now, right turn.
Correct.
Why, why is that? Does that, like, lot, like, I'm just curious, why, to me, I'm not a traffic engineer, but being able to go straight or to turn left would improve mobility? How does limiting it to just right turns improve the mobility?
Those left turns were actually having a negative effect, and it was actually increasing the delay.
Really?
Because you'd have a traditional light.
Yes.
Okay.
What are the options for those coming west on Snofford to get south on Sawmill or across to the west side of Sawmill Road, then? Because now, they can go across, right? They can't now, that's why you can't.
There is no.
Oh, that's why you can't.
You know what your option is? You go through the parking lot.
Yeah, you cut through that.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
That's the only option.
That's the only option. But yeah, we haven't fixed that, this wouldn't fix that, then, would it?
This alternative doesn't provide those opportunities. It would, it would retain what's there now, as far as the no left-hand turns and the no through movements.
Was there an option considered that would provide that?
Yes, and actually, we can skip ahead, ahead a couple slides, and we can talk about it.
Just, just get back on track. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's, that's.
There's a question that jumped off the page.
No, I think that's the.
Hold that thought.
Purpose of the presentation. Then, this, this slide's actually pretty quick. The intent of this slide is just to show that once the fourth leg of Snofford is constructed over to Dublin Center Drive, and then once John Shields Parkway is completed, that get, that does give you that connectivity, that you'll have a direct route of John Shields Parkway all the way to Snofford, I mean, Sawmill Road. Okay, now to, to get to the question that was just, just asked. We did, we, we went back and forth between the innovative corridor alternative B and the conventional alternative B, and as I noted, we recommended the conventional alternative we've, we'd be, we further recommended a phased solution. And so, just to reorient everybody, again, here's north is up, Kane Road here, Sawmill Road here, Dublin Center Drive over here, Snofford Road here. So in the future, if we, if you note that the traffic volumes, the accessibility issues, any mobility issues, anything that shows that the improvements that were constructed are no longer, can no longer handle what's happening at the road, if improvements beyond those are necessary to address those issues, a recommended phased solution is what was innovative alternative B, and it's the bowtie at Snofford Road. So in this, in this particular, excuse me, in this particular configuration, you still would not have the left turns. You would not have the, you, you wouldn't have a direct left turn from Snofford onto Sawmill, but you would have the ability to go through the intersection, and you would have to go through the roundabout and come out and make the, then, a right-hand turn onto Sawmill Road. So for example, if you wanted to turn, if you wanted to go north on Sawmill Road from Snofford, you would go straight through the round, straight through the intersection, through the roundabout, and a right-hand turn. If you wanted to go, if you wanted to go south on Sawmill Road from Snofford, coming from the east, you would have to go through the roundabout, or go through the intersection, I'm sorry, through the roundabout, and then make the, then right-hand turn.
Is that like a Michigan left with a roundabout in it?
Something.
I'm, I'm serious, I think it really.
Conceptually?
Yeah.
Because we recommended this phased solution be kept in mind, we further recommend that if the conventional intersection were to progress to detailed design, that it be designed in such a way so as not to preclude this phased solution.
Can I ask you one quick question there? Why couldn't you put a roundabout right there in the middle, and you can go anywhere you want to go? I mean, I don't want to throw a wrench in it, but I'm just, it just seems like the shortest distance between two, two points is right there. Just curious as to why, what, why, you know, why you can't put it there.
I'm not even really sure. I don't think that was ever considered, because Columbus, I'm not sure.
So there, there were a couple of different issues, but the, the, one, Columbus was not super supportive of that concept, but two, it's one of those situations where you can't build the roundabout large enough, so the number of approach lanes that you would need in order to be able to accommodate the, the circulating traffic and be able to get the side streets in, while minimizing the potential for conflict within the circulatory roadway, was definitely a challenge, and we couldn't really sufficiently meet the demands.
I appreciate that, Jeanne, because when you look at it, it just seems like you're dealing with a couple lanes, but you're talking at five, six, five lanes, yeah.
Yeah, you're talking about three lanes in each direction, plus two lanes coming in from the side.
Big roundabouts aren't easy, are they?
No. They're a little challenging.
We have one.
We do.
So the, for the two recommendations that we included in the study, here are the opinion of probable project costs. These are total project costs. These include design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction. So for corridor convent, for the corridor, for the recommended conventional corridor alternative B, the opinion of probable, probable project cost is $12.2 million in 2019. The opinion of probable project cost for the recommended I-270 crossing is $8.9 million in 2019. And I do want to point out that these cost figures are independent, they are for each alternative. And with that, I would like to turn it back over to Jeanne to discuss the next steps.
So the next steps for the study, from our perspective, are to engage our public and our stakeholders in the area. Of course, we wanted to bring the study forward to council for your information first. We do have a number of interested stakeholders who have reached out to us, who would like to sit down and have a meeting and talk about the conclusions and the recommendations of the study, and in addition to some of the business owners, the East Dublin Civic Association. And then we also would like to develop, based on the recommendations of the conventional corridor B, a project prioritization and a funding strategy to be brought forward into future CIPs for your consideration. And at this time, Mike and I would be happy to address, or try to address, any of your questions that you may have.
Questions from council. Keeping in mind, we're about ready to send this off for all kinds of input and feedback and comment and analysis. Christina?
Do you want to go? Okay. Oh, can you go back just one more slide, please?
Yes.
So for the corridor piece.
Is this the slide you wanted?
Yes.
Okay.
How much of the $12.2 estimated dollars is Dublin, and how much would be Columbus? Because I'm assuming that's for the total project.
It, it is, and those funding splits have not yet been determined. Those are future considerations and conversations that we need to have and continue to have with the city of Columbus.
Okay, gotcha.
Anything else that anybody wants to say now? Kathy?
Just a quick question. The Toller Road, the, the connection, the 270 crossing, when you look at that, was there any need to increase the size of Toller? I know you were saying that was going to create some nice offset, but I know that Toller Road, quite a curve, smaller road, I didn't see any change in the consideration and the plan for that.
We don't believe that that's going to be the case at this point. However, we do propose to have a bridge crossing study to determine its proper location, and at that time, we would also like to take a look at the surrounding roadway network to make sure, because that bridge is going to have some fairly significant development impacts, and on the potential of development on both the north and the south side of 270, we recognize that, and we want to incorporate that into the study, and at that time, I would imagine that we would take into account anything like upsizing of Toller Road, but right now, we don't think that that's going to be the case. It's the great advantage of having a grid, the gridded roadway network, so similarly to what we're seeing more in the downtown areas.
Do you know when you'll start the public engagement portion?
We would like to begin that, yet this summer.
Dana, do you want to motion as to these two things?
I, I do relative to the process. You know, the thing I would emphasize, this is the longest, this is long-term planning, this is what we do, and I, I think we're good at it, and, you know, starting to engage residents and stakeholders and property owners, and getting that feedback and refinement and so forth is what this is all about. So I think really what we're looking for is an endorsement, more so of the, of the process, more so than the actual options. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Because these things, these things may get morphed, or depending on the feedback and so forth that we might get over time, so. Does that make sense? Is that the right?
Yep.
So, so in other words, we're going to, we're going to begin, just want to make sure you're okay with us going ahead and proceeding down the road of the engagement process and getting feedback.
Seems like you're getting nodding heads. I think you're in good shape.
Right.
Thank you, Jeanne.
That's a collective head nod, yes.
Collective head nod, yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Morpsy participation in the regional housing study. Dana?
Yes, just real quick, there was a memo in your packet about this housing, regional housing study that's going to be managed and overseen by the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. As the memo mentions, there are several entities throughout central Ohio that are involved. City of Columbus is providing the, the heaviest lift of this, along with Franklin County commissioners, and then they are asking the suburbs to participate. I'm recommending that the city of Dublin do participate in this. Its contribution would be $10,000, which would be consistent with what they're asking from the other suburban communities to participate. You can do what, sort of an à la carte plan, if you wanted to see kind of how the results of this come out later. We'll keep you, if you should choose to do this, apprised of the, the progress and the outcomes. You could take this study as a sort of a foundational look, and then drill down more on Dublin and immediately around the Dublin, which I think would tie back nicely to some of the retreat goals that you had had around housing. You could probably tie that back into that. So I, I recommend that we would expend these dollars to participate, and I just wanted to make sure you were, all were okay with that.
Any questions from council on that issue?
The only question I had, so they're going to do a regional study that will include Dublin, but not be specific to Dublin, so we will be included in that, but if we wanted to break it out and have more depth, was what you're saying, but we will get something that includes.
Correct. They'll be looking at the entire region.
Great. I, I think it's, if we listen just what's happening around the region, affordability in some parts of the country, I think this is just important that we.
So is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Then I second that motion. Anne?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan? I'm sorry, Ms. Fox, and Vice Mayor Amros Grums.
Yes.
Okay.
Staff comments.
Okay, thank you. So there are several follow-up informational and status updates items in your packet. Happy to answer any questions you may have on those. A few items, though, I do need to lift up to you this evening. One, we had a memo in your packet regarding enhancements of the lettering and or braiding on the US-33 State Route 161 bridge over I-270. I'd like your feedback and direction on that. Feedback might be, you know, do you want to, want us to go ahead and color the, the Dublin letters? Do you want us to go ahead and color the Dublin and letters and the braiding? Do you want us to do nothing, or might you want to kick this to a committee to take a look at and report back?
I thought option two was pretty sharp, in looking at it, uh, looking at your options, the Dublin and the, and the striping. I think at least you'll know that you're moving through Dublin. So option one, just the name Dublin, eh, that was okay, but it wasn't great.
For me personally, I don't, I mean, I was traveling around this past week, and I drove down past Cincinnati, and it is really interesting the way different communities do. I mean, it's a significant thing. It's not nothing. I mean, Grove City does it a certain way, I mean, you have, they have two different, that they do differently. I'm not comfortable making a choice just based on these pictures. I mean, and I agree with you, John, it might be number two, but I think maybe somebody who has more of an artistic eye than me should be looking at this and deciding, because I think it's a significant thing. You put the wrong color green on there, it's going to go from looking very classy to very tacky very quickly, and I just don't know.
And I, I was not crazy about them at all. I, I don't know about making them green, or if you could just, you know, darken them. It almost looks like a sign in, in green, and I think it's so artfully done, the interchange is so artfully done, that this really removes the, the artful nature and makes it.
It's really subtle now, and the subtlety has kind of a class to it. But I don't know, I agree with John, enhancing the name.
Yeah, it's really hard to read that you're moving through Dublin.
Yeah, I agree. I think it is hard.
It's really subtle, to be honest, yeah.
When you get to Worthington, you know you're in Worthington.
But maybe not green, maybe it's just darkened.
I think we should maybe have some additional. I'm not sure about the green, it's really difficult to tell what it looks like in the picture. I, I do think it is too subtle, to Kathy's point. Do you guys want to kick it to a committee, or you want to talk about it here?
I mean, there's, there's all shades of green, too. There's moss green, there's subtle greens that we can do.
Then you're going to compete with the color on the bridge, and then you're going to have two different color greens.
Right.
You either have to go with the green on the bridge, or go with something else.
Yeah.
But, committee?
Who would the right committee be? I don't even.
Public Services, as Zoe said. An artistic, do we have an artistic committee?
We don't have one of those.
Your recommendation?
I, I would, I would recommend Public Services Committee, and we could get some more artful eyes on the color.
Yeah, because that just made me nervous.
I, I would, I would certainly recommend, if there's any sort of, I don't want to use the word disagreement, don't take it the wrong way, if, you know, any concern about color, then I wouldn't try to sort it out here tonight, I would.
That was kind of my point.
A committee, and we can spend a little more time delving into that.
No matter what happens, we'll pick something wrong. Michelle, what are your thoughts? Do you have your finger on the pulse of the committees? Public Services, Dana's recommendation? All right, I make a motion, we refer this issue to the Public Services Committee.
I'll second it.
Vice Mayor Amros Grums?
Sure.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Good.
Ms. Fox and Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate it. Second National Association of Volunteer Programs named Dublin for its 2019 Innovation Program Award for the Alexa Project, so just wanted to say congratulations. Didn't want to steal anybody's thunder on that, but wanted to lift it up. I hope everyone joins us with the upcoming Fourth of July celebration and the related activities. Our News in 90 this week, did I think did a good job of, of talking about those, how the wristbands work and so forth, so I would encourage everyone to take a look at this week's News in 90. Last, I wanted to congratulate Vince Papsodaro as he retires from the city and from public service this Friday. Vince's coworkers in the city will honor his retirement with a celebration reception this Friday, June 28th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Tallo, at DRC Tallo 1. If you can stop by, it'd be great, and certainly congratulate him on his retirement. The social hour is at 4:00, formal remarks are going to be at 5:30. Vince, Vince was a director of, had a great career path, just real quick. He served a lot of, a lot of different, a lot of different communities. You may not know this, he was a, he was a graduate student intern in the Ohio Department of Development, was a development specialist at the Ohio Department, Department of Development. He was a senior planner in Springfield, New Jersey, principal planner at Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. Then he was a senior, then he saw the light and came to Dublin as a senior planner. Left, went to work for Carlsberger, went to work for ACP Visioning and Planning. He's been a lecturer at the Ohio State University on planning, and he's, was the director of planning and community development for the city of Delaware. planning and community development for the city of Delaware, then became the planning administrator of the city of Columbus, and actually at the time we hired him was the deputy director of development for the city of Columbus when we hired him as our, our planner. So just very proud to have had Vince on our staff. We kind of knew when we hired him it was going to be for a period of time, as he is off to Maine. So we're very proud to have served with him, and I just wanted, wanted to honor him here publicly and thank him for his service, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Dana. Community reports, P and Z. Jean?
P and Z, we had a pretty full plate this past Thursday. One of the things I think council will be interested in hearing about is that we had an informal review of the property at the corner of Rings and Franz. Paul Godati presented his informal concept from Daimler. There was good public attendance. There were no negative public comments. Commissions informally liked the proposal. There were options, there were a couple of options. The discussion centered around the use of connectivity with pedestrians, bicycles, in traffic and shuttles, going through the, the two options and discuss the pros and cons of those. Architectural styles were discussed, and the commission commented on a request to incorporate the field of corn as an enhancing adjacent asset. And a great discussion ensued concerning various ways to activate the park and the retail spaces and utilizing the ponds to, to become an asset for the office, office buildings that were there. So a very good response, a good conversation, a good informal review. Secondly, the current discussion that I'm seeing at planning and zoning that's coming up repeatedly is the incorporation of connectivity by using, as a partial comes before us. Commission is constantly saying, how is it connected by bike paths, by pedestrian walkways? How is the layout of the, of the parking incorporating the ability to move through it with multimodal uses? If we have shuttles, can they get through? Are you taking advantage of drop-offs for lifts and Ubers? It's constantly coming up in the conversation. And it's, and I think it's coming up in ARB at times. So I'm, I'm wondering if maybe this might deserve a work session with our commissions just to talk about council's vision and viewpoint on ensuring that we have connectivity, incorporating the planning conversation and economic development sitting in, just to have a conversation of what we think future connectivity in the city looks like. Because what happens is, is that if we don't talk about it as a holistic look, then we get a development that comes through to planning and zoning with no connectivity, and we have to go back to the drawing board to ask them for it. So the commissions have asked in the past to have conversations with council just to talk about things that come up, and this is one that's coming up. So I'm, I'm suggesting that maybe we look at a work session sometime in the fall. We can just talk about this, this and any other things, but, so that's pretty much planning and zoning.
Thank you. Jean? Admin. Chris?
Yeah, the admin committee met on Wednesday, the 19th. We reviewed seasonal pay benefits, and staff put together a really informative presentation for us, and we did not declare any action at that point in time to come to, that would come before city council. So Homer laid out, you know, where they are and that the needs are being met, and I think that it was a very informative presentation, but no action needs to be taken at this point in time. And then on Monday, the 17th, as you all will recall, as you were present, we had our mid-year check-in with our city manager. So we have, have met our, our goals that we set, that we set out to do for those. So that's just been the activity since our last time together of the admin committee.
Thanks, Chris. Community development, John?
We had unfinished business related to the sod improvement program. Does anyone know if the ARB has met since then? Has approved it? Does anyone know? They have not met? Okay. Well, we'll just put that off again then, till the next council meeting.
Is that it?
That, but thank you.
Finance, how about Kathy or Christine? Anything?
We have a meeting coming up. Sorry, we have a meeting coming up before the next council meeting, so.
Okay. Public Services Committee, Christina?
We met and talked through the parking study, RFP. I think we had a great conversation. You know, Jane Hoppen, if you want to help me summarize this, but, you know, we talked about the need for understanding parking. I think there were some concerns about including the parking, including the historic business owners in the parking study. I think that staff agreed to do some follow-up and talk with some of the business owners down there, and I know Jane did, and I did as well. So there's more to come on that. I, I think the idea is that we wouldn't want to include, you know, doing these cloud-based parking solutions with a group of people who don't want them. A lot of this was very focused on the Bridge Park side of the river in terms of providing potential parking solution on street, so this would just be on street through, gosh, now I forget the name of the company, Park Mobile. And it's all web-based, and there's a variety of different things that go into it. Certainly you guys can read the agenda from that meeting and the minutes as well. But I think that there's some follow-up for, for staff to do. One of the things that Jane brought up, and you just alluded to it just now with your planning and zoning report, is this idea of, of mobility and different types of transportation, whether it's Uber and Lyft or whether it's a circular, and do we have enough space for those kinds of things on the on-street area, in the Bridge Park area, you know, not on Riverside, but sort of behind that area. So we talked through that, and we asked staff to take a look at that as well as we go through this, this process. So there's more to come, so we'll, we'll bring you more information as we have it. Jane, do you want to chime in? That was sort of a really high-level, 10,000-foot view.
I think the thing I would add is there were options that were given to us. There were like three different options. And I think that we need to bring forward those exactly and not just, so that you understand what, what the mobility study is asking for. And that way, we can have some more targeted questions. It isn't just a matter of paid parking. There were other options there that would allow private parking spaces to be revenue generators for businesses. So I think the discussion can be pretty deep. I think that we can look at pieces and parts of the city, but I think that we, we probably need to bring you the, the whole comprehensive plan. But we still have some questions, so I don't think we were ready to bring it forward to council yet.
Exactly. Thank you.
And? Thank you, Christina. Coda, Kathy?
Yes, so in addition to our outstanding events on the Fourth of July, for those people who would like to do the red, white, and boom on July the 3rd, just reminder that Coda is a good option. They move something like 50,000 people to and from that event, and it, and it, it works really well. So a little plug for if you're thinking about doing that, think about taking Coda.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, Kathy. Friendship Association, Christina? Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Chris?
Two things. You probably saw the press release information that was distributed about the report, reprioritization of the Post Road 33 from the 270 Tuttle. So that's certainly good news for us and will help us alleviate one of our most congested areas of town. And then, secondly, on Wednesday, I will be headed to Washington, DC just for a day trip at the invitation of Morpsy for a Hyperloop presentation, and going to meet with Congressman Balderson and hope to meet with Senator Portman as well to talk about the prioritization of that project and how they might be able to help us inside the belt.
Thanks, Chris. Logan Union, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Nothing to report, thank you.
How about the Northwest 33 Corridor Group?
Yeah, we had a, a great conversation. The corridor group's going to put together within the next six months to a year calendar to update all the townships, to educate them about the overlay, and we asked them to add Washington Township because you have a little piece of that pie. So we had, asked them to do that. ODOT's doing a study to create a unified game plan, and they have a steering committee that they're putting together, and since Kathy wasn't there, I volunteered her to be on it.
Excellent work right there.
And that's what happens when you don't show up. I said she wanted to get involved because of Coda, and she'd be the perfect transportation partner. And they said, that's a good idea, and so you're in.
Thanks, Jean.
Okay, no problem. So Morpsy, okay, $10 million application from, from Union County for the Post 161 intersection, but I think we have to do a shout-out to our girl Megan over there because she, she somehow managed to bribe, cajole, tease, and, and managed to get $10 million out of them. So thank you.
There was no bribe involved.
Well, there's no bribing, but.
Just charm and indulgence.
Somehow she charmed them into it.
No bribing on the record. But can I chime in? Can I chime in on that, though? I, I really would like to say, I also want to acknowledge Megan for the, we'll call it maneuvering on that, and the understanding of how all this money comes down and who's got money in what pots and how to maneuver that around. We'll use the word maneuver that around.
Maneuver, or charm.
She just did a beautiful job of, of getting that prioritization reset, so. Appreciate, appreciate that. Thanks for, thanks for lifting that up.
Yes, I know you did an awful lot of work for that, and it's really appreciated because there was a huge gap, wasn't there? Quickly, I wanted to say that, just a little update. We were told that the FedEx is breaking ground in early July, just to give you a feel for the FedEx building is breaking ground in early July. And Dublin Green, almost all the outlots will be full. There'll be Taco Bell, Smoothie, Beer Barrel, and Wild Ginger. I just want to let you know, that's what came up. And then we did ask for a complete overview map of the entire 33 corridor improvements. And one of the reasons that we asked for that, it's very complex as everybody's making improvements, but an awful lot of money is being thrown into 33 corridor for the intersection improvements and roadway improvements and all that sort of thing. And that not only is going to give us a clear understanding of what's getting accomplished and where the money is going, but it's also significant in using that as ways to improve our ability to reach out and show the region how economic development can be starting to happen there because of the money and the energies that are being made. So we're looking, we asked that to, to be finished so that we can begin to spread the word that the 33 corridor is really moving forward. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Jean. Dublin Arts Council, John?
Yeah, we've got a very successful art show going on by Sharon Dorsey, and I gotta say that what's exciting is that they probably sold three-quarters of all the art that Sharon put out there on the very first night. It's still on display if you really want to see it, but it just was so stunning that it seemed to sell out immediately. And then this is our Sunday at Toyota program, will be Porter and Sailor, and it'll be sort of a country duo, and that'll be the next show this weekend. So see you there.
Thanks, John. Board of Education, Christina?
Nothing.
How about Washington Township? Mr. Richter? You don't have your cohort chief with you tonight? Took a day off. Dublin Bridges, Jean?
Next meeting is in July.
And we'll stay right with you for roundtable.
Well, I'd also like to tell Vince, after working with him on planning and zoning and in planning commission, that I think he's been a wonderful partner. We've learned a lot from him. He's taught a lot of us, a lot of the nuances, and I think we're, we are really going to miss him, so I'm, I'm sorry he isn't here tonight, but I want him to know that. And then also, not only speaking about Vince, but I noticed in the, the Monday report that we, that we get through, there are some milestone anniversaries. And I think sometimes some of our staff, maybe from the council level, needs to hear that we appreciate the years of service. So if you don't mind, I'm just going to mention that there are five of them. Kirk Fisher has been here 20 years. He's with Recreation Services Administrator. Cindy Barney has been here 25 years. She's an IT project leader. Tom Hoshi, 25 years, an emergency management law enforcement planner. Melody Kennedy is a budget manager. She's also been here 25 years. And Terry Stickel, he's a fleet technician, number one. He's been here 25 years. So from council, I think we need to say thank you for those years of service. That's all I have.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jean. Kathy?
Wonderful, thank you. And my congratulations and thanks to Vince as well. I just keep wondering what he's going to do in the community of Maine, what's going to happen with the plan. Look, I could just see it now, that, that we're going to hear about all sorts of advancements there. So I can't believe he'll really retire, he's just going to do some things in Maine. But thank you, Vince, for all you've done. I just had a couple other comments. Angel, I sent earlier today, thanks very much for the CIP reports. I found those very helpful as we go into the planning to look at payments to date and the encumbrances report. I just sent a questions and copied council on. There was just, just some clarifications and understanding about, am I reading that report correctly, so.
And our response is almost completed, so you'll have that by tomorrow, we need it the latest.
But it was really helpful, and I think it, it provides some real insight as we go into planning, just the scope and depth of some of those projects. And for me, that was incredibly useful, so I appreciate that. I, I know that was a lot of new work by the team, but I think it's going to be very helpful, and I wanted to say thanks for that. Couple other things, as we talked about earlier in the long-term planning of changes to the roadway ensemble, et cetera. As you know, there's been a discussion group talking across Union County, Jerome Township, and Dublin, looking and discussing the roadway along Highland, Troy, et cetera, so forth. The focus of that been, that work, it has been to look at what are those alternatives? What are those possible funding sources? What are the ways forward? And that group would like to continue to do some of that work and meet again hopefully in July or early August and look at really just sort of the scope of the work in that region. So I will keep this group updated on that. And then finally, I, I thought maybe I'd bring one other idea for consideration to the group, and that is maybe for us to ask staff to potentially look at some ideas about how we get information when we're looking at large economic development processes and agreements. Tonight was just a wonderful example. What, do we have five or six really fantastic ADA's, some more complex than others? And as I reflected really on some of the discussions, I think in the, the more complex ones that involve maybe larger real estate, that it might be advantageous for us to have maybe the staff, more staff presentation with the potential landowner or the developer, et cetera, at our first reading rather than wait till our second reading, because I think as, as we look at some of these complex things, I think we're doing a lot of, of work that maybe doesn't give us enough time. So one of the things I would ask staff, if the rest of council are in agreement, is that maybe we, we should look at, at how we might want to have that engagement and information on, on some of the more complex ones. Because sometimes asking the questions and getting it right before the second reading may or may not be most advantageous. And I don't know how others feel, but I, I think it might be worth thinking about.
I think there's, there's a lot to be said about getting some questions answered in the first reading, simply because it could be that it just makes the progress go smoother. If you have an opportunity in the beginning to ask some of the questions and get them answered early, then it just might make the process smoother. And I think one of the things we're always striving to do is be easier to, to let processes go. So I, I do think that at times it's, it's, it would be nice to be able to ask those questions during the first reading. I don't think it has to happen every time, but on something that's more complex or something that the, the city might have, or the council might have some questions on, I think first reading to have someone there to ask the questions to would be good.
I don't necessarily disagree on, when we had the first reading of this batch that we had second reading on tonight, I don't know if it would have been helpful to have them present at our first reading. I, I don't disagree that it would be nice to get some answers.
I think we should look at the process, and that's, that's what I.
Evaluate, yeah.
Yeah, and I think on, on some of them that are more standard, I, I concur that Yeah, and I think on some of them that are more standard, I concur that it wouldn't. On some that are more complex, I think the ability to have some of those discussions early might be useful. And my only request was maybe just to think about, is there an opportunity to improve that process? Maybe there isn't, but it strikes me as, it might be a useful discussion.
Could that be a discussion that we might add on to as a smaller portion on an agenda of a work session?
I could. I mean, it certainly could. Again, I just think in the more complex ones, I mean, some of the information, you know, is received as of, you know, an hour or two before the discussion this evening.
Sure, I get that.
And they're just complex. So, it's not a, it's not a, it's just the way the current process is. It lends itself to be, it's just difficult to do in those situations.
Yeah, I just think about what is the definition of complex versus not. You know, you could get, you know, kind of in a quagmire there, just with the depth of that. But, it could be, again, I think if we have a work session that's scheduled, something we carve out 15 or 20 minutes to have a discussion about. Because I think it'd be a good idea for us to think about that, and think about what that might look like, what that might mean, so staff has clear direction.
Well, another thought is, instead of having another meeting, maybe if we run across, which, you know, we always have great discussions, but maybe if we see something come up on the agenda that we think would benefit any of us to have questions answered in the first round, we just simply ask our staff to inquire if we could have the person there.
Yeah.
So that we could ask the question. And that way, we're not doing it with every. We just do it with ones that we have the opportunity to say, listen, I think I might have four or five questions. And it'd be nice to be able to have them answered that evening in the first reading.
Yeah, I think, you know, to tack on to that, maybe alternatively, staff can use their best judgment as well to think about, hey, I think this one might be more complex. What are your thoughts? And reaching out to tell us as well, maybe both directions.
I guess I don't necessarily see that as a change in the process that we have. And I'm very, very hesitant. A lot of these are negotiations between staff, who, and we have an economic staff, that this is their profession to do, their negotiation. I would be really hesitant to have conversations with the representative of a company and start asking them, well, would you guys accept this? Would you guys accept that? Or those kinds of things. I think maybe we just ask questions earlier than we ask them at the first reading, and I think staff will get you answers.
So, earlier than the first reading, meaning?
Yeah, I mean, we have our packet a week before the meeting.
Yeah.
Read it, send an email.
Again, that has been a bit of a challenge. So, maybe we'll just need to work on that collectively.
I, it does not mean that we can't do better at the process that we have. And maybe that's what we need to strive to do, is to do better at the process we have as opposed to, and see if that fixes the flow of information.
Yeah, I think that would really, if you don't mind, if we're, if we want to lean forward on some of these, I would really suggest a work session discussion, because there needs to be a back-and-forth between staff and council on that. It's kind of hard to do in this setting. We could spend more time talking through that, because I think there could be some things that could be detrimental to the process with that, and also may send messages to people that say, you know, negotiation processes and stuff make that, we only have very few tools. And the few tools that we have, you know, are best leveraged in negotiation. And if a company feels like those tools are now a public discussion, you're still going to have the public discussion, it's still all going to be divulged and talked about once it's introduced. But, if we get out ahead of that, it might send the wrong message to a company. And there's a lot of things, too, that we can't even reveal, like where the company might go, and so forth. So, there's some limitations.
And Dean, I'm not suggesting that, but I just find that.
But, those are the things I.
We're very crunched here. You know, we're getting questions answered, and we're getting data back an hour before we're, and I just, I'm trying to figure out how to get that process. So, it doesn't change that, certainly that nature of it, but it can, you know, create a better flow back and forth.
Yeah, I think.
If there are ways to do that.
That definitely warrants a work session discussion, because, you know, we're trying to get you things as soon as we can. Sometimes, we're just up against the company's timeframe and honor. So, there's a lot of ins, gives, and takes in that, so.
Thank you.
Anything else, Kathy?
Nope, thank you.
John?
Nothing.
Christina?
Yeah, just a couple things. Echo my thanks to Vince, and congratulations to him and his retirement. I'm sure he will find things to do in Maine. Thank you for putting the memo in the packet regarding an update on aging in place. Congratulations to Christine and to Centerra on the Alexa project. Can we change the name of that update, though, to Forever Dublin?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. And then, Ann, I think we will need to get a meeting on the calendar for the Public Services Committee to talk through the bridge letters. And then, I think, Donna, we have some follow-up that we'll be getting from the parking study? Yes? Does that need us to meet again, or will you just bring that to us? Or how do you foresee that looking?
I don't see it requiring another meeting. We should be able to assemble that information for you ahead of time.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. And that's it.
Thank you, Christina. Chris?
On the 18th, speaking of Vince and the good work that he's done, we wrapped up the Bridge Street District Stakeholder Meeting. We had our conclusions, so that's going to roll out to the boards and commissions and public comment, and that process will be starting. Greg and I got to tend the kickoff for the corporate challenge on Friday, and it was an energetic group, so that was good. Wanted to thank Matt for the pedestrian tunnel follow-up. I appreciate that on my little five-mile loop this morning. I saw just the picture you sent, so that was helpful. The capital project funding status, that was a really useful report. It was very readable and measurable to where we are, where we intend to go, and a little bit of where we've been. So, thank you for that. Certainly do appreciate it. And the first quarter commercial real estate wrap-up. So, we're little, we're kind of well into the second quarter. When will we see the second? Because we were kind of anticipating some good changes for the second quarter wrap-up. How long after the end of quarter do we typically get that report for the Q1 commercial real estate stats?
We usually don't get those until, I want to say, 45, 60 days into the next quarter. It lags a bit, because I think it's Colliers who does that, does a standard report for the region. We pay them an additional to drill down for us.
Right.
So, they'll prepare after the quarter's passed. They'll prepare, and then we get ours, ours lags a little bit, because we do more of a Dublin specific.
I know we were anticipating.